I'm sitting here Debbie's gonna show me where I'm just gonna watch Debbie and she's gonna keep me on a straight and narrow. Kristin's gonna keep me on a straight and narrow.
Y'all ready?
Y'all good?
Y'all ready?
Y'all.
And I'll call Commissioner Combs or even Minister Reports.
I do not.
I have one, I have the Economic Development Monthly Report. We need copies. No, I only got one, I need copies of it.
How many?
That's not the... No. One for each of them. They haven't seen it yet. And Sam, three?
Yeah.
That's this one. Okay, with that, do we have any Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports or Announcements of upcoming meetings and/or events? In the Chamber Economic Development meeting this morning, leadership meeting.
Have a meeting with the MMRPC to talk about some projects on Wednesday. Christmas party Friday.
We'll be out of town.
All right. Send some money.
Just problems.
All right, then we're gonna start it. I don't wanna get too late on here. I do have to leave for a while at ten. I will probably miss the rest of the morning because I have to be on a conference call at ten. For no other reason than Mike, you're first, you can start.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I put the page number five to me, so if that helps you guys.
Are we working out of the, are we working out of the book then?
Yeah.
I'm on page 132.
Not much you wish to. But I do need copies of that.
You're on 132 or 131?
I'm on page 132.
Okay.
131 is what I would call...
131 is revenue, 132 is expense.
Yep, okay, 132, I don't know if everybody's there, I'll just start it. Salaries are going down, yes?
Rock and roll.
Salaries, I'm asking a request for extending the QRV to seven days, 12 hours a day from its current one supervisor, five days a week. I did in August or September include a justification for that. Roughly forty-nine thousand increase to salaries with approximately twenty-seven thousand increase to overtime. Any questions? Keep going.
Yeah, I just had a question on the twenty-seven thousand dollars in overtime.
Yep.
So, is that just from both of them working limited amount of overtime?
Correct, correct. The way the schedule would be deployed, they would be on opposing 12-hour shifts.
Right.
You'd have three days one week, four days the next. That fourth day in that one long week, I call it, would generate some overtime there. It, you'd have thirty-six and then forty-eight. You cross that forty-hour mark, that would be the hours overtime. They would not see as far as shift overtime, I call it, like covering trucks or anything like that. They would not see that other than just their deployment schedule. They would see working that QRV.
Okay. Is that, is that something that if they were salaried, that they would not be eligible for that, or how does that work?
That would, but according to my discussions with Debbie, that we've already engaged in that, they are in a position of the field. So, FSLA standards and everything else, it's not a good idea to exempt them because of the nature and the deployment of their work. Myself being in the office and so on and so forth, not being assigned to the field, you're clearly exemptable according to FSLA standard.
So, you're talking eight hours roughly a month, maybe a little bit more than that based on full and half weeks?
It would be thirty-two hours a month, four eights, eight hours a week times four weeks, thirty-two hours a month. And multiply that by two, sixty-four hours a month for both personnel.
No, it's, it's four hours a week.
No, it'd be, it'd be eight hours.
It'd be eight hours for one person, but it'd be four hours combined. One's gonna work thirty-six, the other's gonna work forty-eight, so...
Yeah, both, go ahead, sir.
Well, so, so every two weeks, they'd have four hours overtime.
No, they'll have eight. When you cross that forty-hour mark in that week two, week one is your three-day week. Week two is your four-day week, right? As soon as you cross that forty hours in that week, you're gonna get into overtime.
So, are they not gonna work forty hours the next week then?
They'll have a thirty-six, forty-eight. It'll be a, a set opposing schedule. So, you, you will see eight hours per person per week of that overtime.
No. Eight hours for one person, one week, eight hours for one person the next week.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, forgive me for not articulating that properly.
So, we pay overtime after forty hours?
That's correct, sir.
Now, Mike, I'm trying to get this. So, you're not requesting a new FTE?
Yes.
Okay, your question.
Yep.
And then the twenty-nine, seven is the eight hours?
Yep.
Okay.
So, we can't salaried them or just not a common practice? Because I think that would make sense.
Well, we already have two in that particular category, and when it came back from, who was that group, Fitch and a associate? They said they're in a non-exempt position. So, I would assume this would still be a non-exempt position. I mean, I could have somebody else look at it if you want. Look, it's all about the job description. But if it's the same job description as the, actually three supervisors that we have now, then it would come back as a non-exempt too.
It's because they're in the field. Jeffrey and not being...
I see what you're saying, but I don't necessarily...
You can do whatever you want, and like I said, I'm not being glib, but FSLA, they have a factor we have to consider. So, my diligence is to inform you that you can exempt them, but it's not a practice that is recommended by FSLA because...
Recommended, it's not a rule or it's a guideline.
So, what it is, is there's ambiguity in the statute, and you can read it one way, you can read it another.
Totally agree.
If, if you get audited by DOL and they disagree with you, or if the IRS for some reason takes a look at it, which would be less likely, and they disagree with you, you can be liable for all the back pay, all the interest, plus penalties and fines.
Do we need to?
That's the risk. You just, I mean, it's a decision. You could set everybody as exempt. You could just announce that every county employee is exempt. And until DOL hits you, you're fine, or you get a private lawsuit from some employee that sues you, you're fine. But when you get hit, you're gonna pay back everything for however long it is, and it can go back a long way, plus interest, plus you can pay penalties based upon the decisions made.
There's huge case law in the, in the city of New York and city of Chicago for their firefighters and paramedics that...
Please.
Mark just touched on this very thing, and everyone that has brought suit forth have won that in Chicago and New York especially. They were into the millions for back pay and everything else. So, all I'm doing is just informing you of that. Jeffrey, not to be glib, you can, we can exempt it, but there are ramifications if we're ever audited. And as Mark said, it is the color of the day.
Okay, let's get away from the exempt thing then.
Okay.
Aren't they essentially a supervisor, and that's how the other ones are exempted because of their positions?
The others that are exempt, one of those persons is, one of, one of those folks is an office-type position, a administrative accounts payable. And the other person is a trainer whom does not have a field assignment. And then myself, obviously, and the remaining supervisors all have a, out in the field laying hands and working.
Who are your other supervisors? You have one in the QRV right now.
Bill Vance.
Who are the other two?
Other two is Vivian and Marcia. They're the intake dispatch supervisors side.
So, every shift you have a supervisor and a dispatcher or dispatch?
Correct, correct.
I don't wanna take a lot of time on this, but it's just, it's my feelings that if I work four days one week and three days the next...
Correct.
That that's a benefit to me, and because if I work three days and I got a four-day weekend, I mean, that's awesome. And I'd love to, I think everybody'd love to do that. And so, I don't look, I mean, anybody can look at overtime as eight hours one week after forty or whatever. I don't look at it that way. I mean, because you're getting like vacation the next week. So, I work four days one week, I work three days the next. I mean, I just, that just blows my mind. I, I would be tickled to death to work four days one week, three days the next.
Except for under federal law, you're, you're stuck on it. And the, the worst part about it is if you agree, say you're the supervisor, and you say, I don't wanna take the overtime because it's a big advantage to me to work this way. And then three years later, for whatever reason, you get upset, you can sue, and even though you agreed it was good for you, you get automatically paid.
I mean, and to your argument, I'd say, no way. You're working four and a half, four hour, four days, four hours, you're working, or you're working three days, four hours, or I don't care how you do it. But, I mean, I'd say no overtime. I mean...
But we did adjust the pay to, to where it's gonna be the same if they work forty hours a week, or they get that eighty hours in two weeks with the overtime, right? Because that's how we adjusted to twenty-four-hour shifts.
Yeah, if you work at twenty-four, there is a drop in, yeah, Mark, there is a pay difference.
Did we do that with these two? I mean, the overtime's still there, but we actually offset, we didn't do it on these.
There are supervisors and they come at a certain rate.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we need to do that, because if we're saying they should make X amount of dollars, take that X amount of dollars. Thirty-two times this plus forty-eight times that equals that. That's something we can look at.
I don't...
I, I think we have to accept it. We don't have to like it. I mean, you know where we're coming from, right, Michael?
Sir, I understand, I understand.
I might say, if there's any way, if we went from three supervisors to four supervisors, Mike, is there any way you can come up with a schedule that none of those supervisors are on overtime?
With the, you, you have two different areas. You have intake and dispatch, and then you have field and operations. Field and operations is where we're lacking in that, so they work two different areas. So, to schedule those folks where they don't have any overtime is that being not feasible? Because with the shifts, they work twelve hours, the opposing three and four. We have discussed this immensely way back in the day, that if you staffed everybody at eight hours, you'd have to have more FTEs to accomplish that, and that's a whole...
I'm just talking about the supervisor level. I'm not talking about the people on the trucks. I'm just talking about the, if you got four supervisors, could you work those four supervisors where you needed them, when you needed them?
Right.
And still keep them all under forty?
To, to, to anti-acres... no, to, to be short and direct, no, because two are in dispatch and then two are in the field. They don't...
It's just the way that twenty-four-hour, seven-days-a-week thing, because when we ran into it with the jailers and stuff, I was trying to figure different ways out, and it...
There's no way out.
You got your, you could do it during the week for your five days, easy enough, you know, three eight-hour shifts, then you got the weekends and...
And that's where we are, we are seven-twenty-four, just like the jail and everything else, and I wish I could say yes, but it is...
I mean, you're right, we are seven-twenty-four, but you know, there, there are some times that we may not be fully staffed. And I mean, that's, that's just part of it, and you know, you, you got supervisors to cover twelve hours, seven days a week, but when they take time off, or, I mean, I don't know how you're gonna backfill that.
We, there, there are no plans to backfill that.
So, then we're not gonna have supervisors on, right? Or they're, they're doing training, or, or they're out sick? I mean, are you gonna have a soup on at that time?
It's just the same as we deploy our ambulances. There is deployment built in for sick, vacation and training and time of day and everything else. But to staff it with overtime, we don't want to do that. If we can staff it without generating overtime, then we will do that. So, it is my goal to have it on the road seven days a week, but I don't want to generate any extra overtime than we normally understand to fill that, if that makes sense. There are positions we have to no matter what, obviously, but the supervisor's not necessary. So, we can, if one takes off on vacation, we can fill that position with a part-time person. We will do that and not generate overtime. Any other questions? All right, rolling on. Going down to bank service charges, we need to up that seven-hundred from the figure of ninety-five-hundred. I had a recent transfer come across two, three weeks ago. Any questions on that?
Why are we having so many bank service charges?
It, and I might have to have Kristin and Debbie help me out on that, but it is based upon your income, lack of a better term, or...
No, actually, it turns out they have more people running a credit card to pay their bills, so every time they swipe the card, they hit B.
Okay. That was an easy answer. Thank you, Kristin, very much, yeah. But it does ebb and flow depending, okay. Going down to billing supplies, requesting to up it a thousand from the current figure. New facility, greater facility, more trash bags, more soap, so on and so forth. Any questions?
So, that's not in there, though? You want it at seven thousand?
Correct.
Okay, go back to the bank service charges, and you wanna...
Up it from ninety-five, add seven hundred dollars onto that.
So, you wanna go ten-two?
Ten-two, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I...
So, how come we don't, I mean, how come we don't see what his request is?
If you wanna go back in your...
Is that department budget?
It's department budget.
It's not there. Yeah, it says nine...
He just said, because they just got the transfer this last week for additional, he's adding to the...
So, you're adding to your request?
Yeah. What I'm doing is...
They're finding out about how these...
Yep.
That's how I understood.
So, I added five because I thought it was gonna be up. He's saying it's gonna be up more than what I thought because they just did the additional number. So, his original request was nine, I did ninety-five, he's asking for ten-two.
And it's still a pretty minimal amount compared to what the total revenues are, because you know, the revenues are about three million, give or take, a little less. And if you're, if, if credit cards were paying all of it, it'd be like, I don't know, it's three percent, ninety thousand dollars, nine, eighty-five thousand dollars is what it would actually be, so...
Two or something.
I came in with a wrong reading.
It's two-seven, I think is generally the rule.
Three for rough estimate. Jeff, you good?
Sir? Yes, sir.
Chris?
Yep.
We got billing supplies. We're gonna move on down to medical services, upping it from seven to eight thousand. Medical services.
You asked for seventy-five hundred.
I show, okay.
Am I looking at the wrong line?
No, I show seven on the one-up.
Well, you asked for seventy-five.
Okay.
The auditor changed it to seven.
Oh, I got you, okay, I'm looking at it, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm asking to, to go up another five hundred to eight thousand. The auditor shows seven thousand. I show the initial request of seventy-five hundred.
What are the med services?
They're specific to biohazard, medical waste, needles, sharps, things of that nature.
Because we're at seventy-six, eighty-eight on annual audits for twenty-fourteen, so that's, that was up quite a bit from the...
Yep.
It's up quite a bit from the previous two years, if we go back to it.
Twenty-thirteen was...
Why is it going up?
The call volume and a big chunk of it is related to the past three months of the Ebola stuff and other...
New, their new protocols?
Yeah, it's just, I hate to say it, but yeah, I mean, you get that crisis room in front of you, you have to expend and prepare for it.
So, I wanna go back here, Mike.
Yes.
Equipment service contract.
Yes.
So, I looked at that a little bit, and is that for these new cardiac monitors?
This will include the maintenance fees, service contracts for the new cardiac monitors we're getting, because we're gonna phase those in. This also will cover the remaining monitors that we have left to phase in next year. Like it says, it's specific to equipment service, and then the fees associated with that, to include the field bridge, the billing side of it as well.
I wanna, I wanna look at that a little deeper, because I hate equipment services contract. I wouldn't have any of them, so...
I agree.
So...
Can you just get us a list of what else in there, I can try to, too.
Yeah, we, we cannot do that, but when we send the cardiac monitor in to repair, we pay a fat, flat fee for all of them. It covers maintenance and everything else. If we don't, we get batteries with this, we get chargers with this, and we get an overall warranty...
Show me the benefit.
Okay, that's...
Because, I mean, we could buy a brand-new cardiac monitor for what we're gonna spend in service contract.
Right, but...
Because there's six of them for two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars, right?
To, to get it serviced, you're gonna be at the mercy of the retail charge for labor and, and everything else, so...
How often do you have to service them?
We, we probably send in a monitor or two a month for service and repair, so it's like a warranty on a vehicle, Chris.
I don't buy those.
Well, that's your opinion.
I understand.
From medical equipment?
Yeah.
When I can have it serviced and repaired, no matter what goes wrong with it, for five hundred bucks? And then if I send it in for service and I don't have the warranty and I've gotta spend fifteen, twenty thousand dollars for one monitor, it is money in the bank for us to have that service contract, because we get batteries and chargers and everything.
I think what he's saying is, just put down what the cost would have been, had we just gotten those things repaired, with the retail cost. You probably called the company and say, what's the retail cost?
I can tell you that.
And then you can say, well, we sent in four of them last year, the retail cost to repair them would have been...
I can, yeah, I can tell you that, right.
X dollars or Y dollars, the batteries are X dollars and Y dollars, and then we can look at it real quick and say, there's a savings of this cost.
I, I can tell you that now if you want, but, yeah.
I mean, I just, I mean, I have a real hard time with your analogy, that it's gonna cost fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to repair one, when I can buy a new one for thirty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
And, you know, if the company's saying it costs fifteen to twenty thousand, they're taking it in the shorts on a fifty-five thousand dollar service contract. So, there's, there's, that's flawed. I mean, there's no way that if it costs that much to, to maintain one or service one, I mean, you know, they wouldn't be in business. I mean, same way with any other service contract, but just, let's, let's move on, so...
Just put it together in a list, Mike, because I think, I think if you look at it in a list, I mean, Chris, maybe, do they come with a, like a one-year warranty when you buy them?
Uh, no, they don't. It's medical, it's medical equipment.
You buy, you buy a lemon.
It is medical equipment, guys, I mean...
Well, no, I'm just, I'm asking, I mean, it's, it's, there's no, you could buy a, a monitor. So, I buy a brand-new monitor.
Correct.
And it shows up and it doesn't work, and they look at you and go, huh, too bad!
I think things of that nature, Mark, that that's being a little...
You know, almost anything you buy that's a substantive piece of equipment has at least a certain amount of warranty built in. I mean, federal law requires thirty days on it.
I think we're going to extremes to describe it like that, but as far as the repair and the maintenance, you're gonna pay retail...
And the other question is, is of those ones that you sent off for repair, I would like to know, are those one-year-old, two-year-old, three-year-old machines? Because if the first time you sent it off for repairs three years down the road, that's a really different analysis than if it's the brand-new machine that, you know, you got four months ago.
And then don't forget also, in that equipment service contract, we have the reoccurring cost for meds, or not med serve, but the billing software, remember that? We transition to service bridge, so the...
How much is that, do you know?
Six-ninety-something a month or something.
Uh, it's a little more than that. It, it comes out to approximately twenty-five thousand a year.
Oh, wow.
So, when you look at where we spent, twenty-nine-eight, twenty-four, almost thirty thousand, the increase is about twenty-five thousand. So, from the thirty to fifty-five thousand, what I'm asking for is just reflective of the reoccurring cost for service bridge. So, I know we're arguing the...
Twenty-nine-hundred a month is the, is that per month?
That's annually.
Oh, that's annually?
Yeah. But what the big one is, is that physio or whatever, that's the...
And that's the...
Yeah, that's fifteen. But what I'm saying is the twenty-five thousand increase that I'm asking is in direct reflection of switching to the service bridge. We're arguing the service contract, but that's not the increase that...
Can you just break it down for us?
Yeah.
Ask it for. Thank you. Well, Mike?
That's all I've got.
Hey, on time and done, how about that?
Do you want to speak of his capital now?
Yeah, what about your capital request?
Capital request, we talked about in August, obviously, that includes the QRV extension, uh, the two ambulances to keep on par with a replacement. Uh, we do two ambulances a year, we are doing remounts, and the remounts are approximately ninety thousand, it may end up being ninety-two thousand, we've got one that's being remounted now, and we got an initial quote for that, but it is a safe bet around ninety-ish. Uh, then we're talking about the monitor replacement phasing in, in phase one would be five new ones, next year would be five more. Uh, you've got a unit cost there, and going down to the ambulance cot and mounting upgrades, uh, for the ambulances, we talked about two, and, but Commissioner Shepherdley increased that to three, and then phased it in on a three-year plan, three, six, nine. We get three this year, three next year, and finish up with the year after. Uh, that is the capital request in a nutshell.
Okay.
Thank you.
Guys, any, any questions for Mike? Sam?
Oh.
All good, all in, all through, yeah?
Yeah.
Run!
All right, I'm done.
That was not bad, you know?
Not too bad.
Well, thank you guys very much.
You're still here.
You guys were good, you didn't say much, sir.
I'm just focused on everything.
So, so my, my advice is, when you get done with the presentation, never, and, and, never say, are you sure you don't wanna ask any questions? The next one that comes is the one that kills you.
That's right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Thank you, Chris.
You bet.
Michael?
Yes.
Michael? I got Mike and Michael.
Morning.
Welcome, you're up.
Um, I believe that Kristi had talked with the commission or given commission, um, a heads-up about a month ago regarding an RN position, uh, that we have an RN that is providing services to, um, Pringer at this time, um, and, um, Kristi and I have met, um, about two, about two, three weeks ago, and, um, it has felt that it would be best for Pringer to have its own nurse and not, uh, use the nurse from the health department. Either I would ask for a, a halftime position, or they would be asking for a position in order to fill in, um, the gaps there at the health department. Uh, in order to do that, it would cost us around, about twenty thousand to have a nurse twenty hours a week, ongoing.
As a employee?
As a part-time employee, yes.
You would concur to the cost?
Probably, yeah. And right now, we have Cindy, who just provides half of the requirement that Michael needs, you know, um, I think he has a contract already for the other six to ten hours, but, um, you know, a nurse is not a nurse's on a nurse. Our nurses are public health nurses, they're communicable disease nurses, they're not prepared to handle some of the mental and behavioral issues there, and also, um, you know, nurses have to operate under a standing order from a doctor, and our standing orders from Dr. Kaywood do not cover the services that need to be done over there at Pringer Center.
What we-
So we'll have to enter into a contract with the doctor?
What, what we have right now is, we have Dr. Lucio from St. Mary's, and he is, uh, our doc that we have for standing orders.
Okay.
So it's been something that I've worked out over the last, uh, four or five years, and so he has signed off every year on our standing orders, so it hasn't cost us anything. That's right, it hasn't cost us anything.
If we were to hire the nurse under the health department, would you have a nurse that could supervise?
Nurse that could supervise? Mary could supervise that, yeah.
Because you would not have, you, if you hired one, you wouldn't have a supervi, a nurse that was a supervisor.
That's fine.
And they would have to report to her.
Uh-huh, that, so are we talking, just putting in her budget?
Well, I mean, that's a discussion, obviously, but, you know, my, and this is my two cents, my preference would be, I would prefer to have all the nurses in the health department.
Okay.
Because then you have a supervisory chain, and you know that you have an actual, you have an RN being able to look over the actions of the nurse, and I think that gives you some back, some-
The only concern I have about that is, I would want Michael or someone of his staff to dictate the duties and what needs to be done over there, so if they were, you know-
We do that with the maintenance, so that's not an issue.
Yeah, I just want you to be able to tell them what you need to be done.
This is above anything that we have budgeted right now, huh?
This is new, yeah.
Yes, new.
It's a new item.
Yes.
And then it would relieve one of the nurses at the health department of some of her duties, correct? I don't know.
Of six hours?
Cindy, she does about six hours a week she goes over.
Yeah.
Because by the time she finishes the clinic, the kids don't get back there till, from school till three-thirty, so she just goes over.
Yeah.
Um, contract services versus-
I don't care.
-a part-time employee?
'Cause he has a contract for part of it now, right?
No, I have not yet, no.
Oh, you haven't? Oh, the other ten hours?
No, no.
Oh, I thought you did.
How would that work?
Uh, it would be just a part-time employee that, that we would have.
No, I mean, if we did contract services instead.
You know, I looked at that, because, I went and checked last year with the, uh, the sheriff's office, they've got the, um, the doc and nurses sitting over there, that was gonna be almost thirty-seven thousand dollars a year to have them do our stuff.
That was doctor and the nurse?
Yes, doctor and the nurse, yeah. It could be where-
And probably have a volunteer for the doctor, which is not an issue?
No, that's not an issue. The doc is not an issue at this point.
But I don't know, the nurse may be a little bit different, um, we have contracts with practitioners, because they are kinda professionals, and they don't need direction, they don't need, uh, nobody supervising them. This one, it sounds like more that they would need the supervision, that it could be a contractor for that one.
So I guess, um, I don't know, I'd like to think about that a little bit more, but I mean, you know, I'm not sure that that nurse really needs to be under you, um, since you're gonna, I mean, they're gonna have a, a certain description of services that we need, and so, you know, maybe we could contract with the hospital or somebody like that, uh, you know, to get us what we need, uh, and, I mean, I don't know if it's actually twenty hours every week, or-
That's what my license require.
That they'd be there twenty hours a week?
And it'd be more evening work than day work.
Which is hard for- hardly.
Yeah, that's, uh-huh.
Right. I mean, I, I don't know, I think we can figure out how to do it.
Okay.
I just, I mean, I just like to think about it, and so, you know, I'd hate to put the burden on some of your staff that, you know, I mean, if they're at his place twenty hours a week, they're not gonna be able to see him, um, so how are they really gonna be able to supervise?
Right. I, I just always hesitate bringing in a new person that ha, that has a professional type of background into a, an area where the, there's no supervisory chain, chain at all.
Okay. I don't understand that.
You know, the other option is, in our, you know, I, I, I'll be honest, I haven't looked at your budget request in depth, Kristi, but is there a need for additional halftime nurse? Okay, that's all there from them.
Obviously, this isn't new stuff, other juvenile centers, do they contract that out? Do they have that in-house? Can you find that out for us?
The ones that have residential services, so I would have to see how they do that, if the county health does it or what it. I can, I can check that out and can get, get back with you on that.
That's fine.
Okay. Moving on, um, I hate going to this, I'm on page eighty-seven, and my next item is equipment service contract.
Well, I gotta go now.
And, um, our biggest bulk on this is Stanley, that's our biggest one, and we're at nineteen-seventh. I can't, eighteen-seven wouldn't meet where my needs are at this point.
That's the security and all that.
Yes, so it's just what it is.
Yeah.
On that there.
Yeah, we're gonna get rid of that.
Okay.
Good. I don't like Stan, I mean, the equipment service contract's bad enough, I hate Stanley.
Okay.
They're just terrible to work with.
We'll try to find something better and hopefully be worth money.
And we have two other areas. Uh, my next area is, uh, vehicle, uh, equipment and operations, uh, I requested seven, uh, I got six, and I'm asking that we go back up to the seven.
So we approved last year? amended budget, seven thousand?
Yes.
Where are we at right now?
No, last year was six-four, wasn't it?
No?
No, that's what you're analyzing, annualization for fourteen.
We, we budgeted seven thousand.
Yes.
Four-fifty-four.
And we're averaging about six hundred a month, give or take.
My thing is, if we don't spend it, it's, it comes right on back, it's, I don't try to go out there and spend it, because it's there. And I think we've done pretty good this year in where we take our vehicles for repairs and things of that nature, so it's cut down, uh, a great deal in that area. Any other questions on that one?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and my last area is the last one, the, um, our drug court grant, that grant is a non-personnel, it's just reimbursement for services that we do, we get twenty-five thousand on the grant, and, um, I'm asking that we just stay there, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it, it's there, but I'd hate to have it where I have to come back and, and try to find dollars from another area when I have bills coming in and I can't pay it.
We weren't sure you asked for reimbursement of personnel.
No, there is no personnel in that one. Personnel's in the suspended classroom.
I think it's both, because I think I pulled the-
No, I have two, no, 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 I have, I have two, two, two grants. I've got one for the juvenile officer, and that one's separate, sixty-seven thousand that comes in for personnel, that's not part of this one.
I know.
And then I have the suspended classroom, and I went back and looked at this one right here, I have no personnel coming out of the drug court, that's, that's just reimbursement of services, but we can go back and look at-
Pull the grants, just look at the grants.
Okay.
Language of grant controls.
Uh-huh.
If it says any and all expenses, then personnel's included, and if it says excluding personnel, or, it's easy enough to just look at the grant and figure it out.
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
All right, any questions for Michael? Sam?
Um, this, oh, capital is ninety-six, ninety-six hundred, and that is for a stove, a, um, dishwasher.
It's kitchen stuff, we talked about that last-
Kitchen stuff, yes, uh, you know, we, we were here just a week ago, and you asked us to come back with that number, you sent on the fifteenth, Debbie and I, we met, we talked last week, and we agreed upon our number, and that was ten.
Okay.
Well, you seen the spreadsheet I sent you guys? I asked them to get the more outdated sheets, I haven't seen those yet, so it's, it depends what year you wanna look at, you know, but you look at a whole calendar year?
We're averaging ten.
And Greg actually says you really need to replace everything.
Huh?
Greg actually says you need to replace a lot more.
Freezer and-
Yeah, but, but it's still, uh, I think we're doing okay with the freezer at this point.
So we still talk about that one?
All right, let's still talk about it. Well, it gives, you see, now that we can actually, now that we know the number, we can look and evaluate the bids, and we can try and make a decision.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Michael.
Okay.
Kristi?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm on page sixty-eight.
Can, uh, go ahead, go.
Um, revenue line four-nine-seven-seven-one is the general public health, that's the A-D local public health contract that we get from the state, and the legislators added one million dollars to that, so, you know, the governor released the whole three-point-three. This number is still based on the two-point-three, because DHSS hasn't adjusted our contract amount, um, November's gonna be the same, they said they'll send a new spreadsheet out in December, so that will actually go up a little bit, however, our little slice of that one million dollars is not very much.
Where would you add, Kristi?
Um, four-nine-seven-seven-one, it's towards the bottom of the page.
Okay.
So we'll, that'll be increased just a little bit.
Just an increase on your revenue side, possibly?
Right. We will get some of it, I just don't know how much of that one million is ours. Um, so on the expenditures, um, I am in support of the cost of living raise for all employees, I just thought I'd say that. I have some, um, employees that qualify for government assistance, and I think they all, um, with the way things are going up, I think everybody needs a cost of living raise. I did ask for, in my proposal, a merit equity raise for some employees, and, um, if the, I was conservative in my estimates, so if the salary pool is larger, I would like to reserve the right to adjust those numbers, or add more employees to that, if it's available. Um, the WIC admin cost, which is on page seventy-five-eight-five-four-nine, um, I had asked for twenty.
Page seventy.
Yeah, page seventy. Is that what I said?
Went to page seventy-five.
Oh, did I say seventy-five? Sorry.
Well, you kind of rolled, rolled together.
Um, it looks like we spent about seven thousand, the annualized spending for two-thousand, four-two-seven thousand, so I'm, I'm asking for you to allocate ten instead of five. And then line five-nine-five-five-seven is school health, which is the money that, um, our nurse spends in mileage to go over to Pringer Center, so if we don't have to do that anymore, we can delete that number, delete that line, five-nine-five-five-seven, school health.
We bumped it down, because that's the minimum.
Yeah, I don't, mileage, yeah.
They used to be higher.
Yeah, so we don't, we wouldn't need that, and then the only capital improvements I was asking for is for either one or two of those two-thousand-four escapes to be upgraded, the white one is especially, especially bad, but the, um, they, we bought two, I guess, at the same time, so, but the white one is not faring as well as the burgundy one, so that was my capital cost.
All right, questions?
What, uh, what are you looking at as far as the vehicle?
Um, I would like to, if we get to replace two, I'd like to replace one of them with just a similar SUV, you know, the guys really do need four-wheel drive when they go out and look at the code enforcement calls and the sewage calls, and then the other one, um, if money allows, I would like to replace it with a four-door truck, because we have all that equipment over at the ESB building, if we have to do a pod, you know, put, uh, or something like that, mass vaccination, or we have cots or whatever, they're not gonna fit in those small SUVs, we really need a, something that can haul it, and we don't have a trailer, we have to borrow one of ESB, so I think a truck would be, um, very useful for us, and the guys could still use it to go out in the field and do their inspections, but we could actually haul some of the equipment that we have over at the, in storage.
That's awesome.
Um, I figured, um, looking at the state contract, I figured about twenty for the small SUV and about twenty-eight for the truck.
Is there any, uh, just gonna ask, I mean, we got all those ESB vehicles over there that sit most of the time, is there any way to use some of these for other things, or?
Depends on what we bought them under, you know, um, if we have, for example, if there's a hazmat grant that we purchased a truck for, then it can only be used for hazmat, most of those vehicles, the only one that might not be is probably Bill's, and he uses his, some, how much, but he uses his, I think all the rest, I think all the rest we've gotten under grants.
Because they were federally funded, they're restricted on the use of vehicles.
So if they were, I'll say if there has, there's, hazmat, I'll say, we could use them during an emergency, but maybe not, depending on the emergency.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, if there's an emergency, emerg, I mean, a true emergency, then I think we can always waive the grants, and we can, we can plead forgiveness, you know?
Right.
I don't think you can use that because, well, you know, we kind of like to replace a truck and we don't want to pay the money.
No, I was saying if we had to set up, if we had to set up a mass vaccination thing and we needed the truck, could we get, you know?
Yeah, if it was, because it was an emergency, if you had to set up a max vaccination for, I don't know, measles, if there was a huge outbreak or something, that would be different. But I think that's what it require.
Something about a refrigerator?
We, I had it in my, my immunization, because, you know, we went to VaxCare, so the amount we're spending on vaccinations is going down. So, but we left the budget the same and Kristen didn't change it. That way we could replace one of the vaccine refrigerators because it's, it having issues. We did have some repairs to it, so we do, we, we kept it in the immunization budget. We didn't take it out as a capital improvement. Yeah, 53734. So I requested 35, she left it at 35. You see, right now, we're only spinning about 14 because, but this is our first year on VaxCare, so.
We weren't sure we wanted to do that yet.
Do you know what VaxCare is? Well, instead of buying our vaccines directly from the manufacturer, VaxCare buys them on send-ups to us and then they do all the billing for insurance and everything and that's how we can get bill private insurance because most of the time, private insurance companies won't contract with local public health agencies. It saves us lots of money out front. And we get an administration fee for giving the vaccine and they do all the billing. We don't have to do that and they give us the vaccine and we don't have to pay for it out front. It is nice. Yeah, very nice.
Do we need to?
We need more than that.
I know, VaxCare's great.
I mean, if you need the refrigerator for vaccines, I really don't have an issue with that. I'm just wondering, do we need to be buying refrigerators out of immunizations? Or should we be taking that money and putting it wherever it needs to go or?
Oh, out of capital, that's up to where it comes from, but we will probably need to replace that one eventually.
And that one is a little different because it's only used for immunization, so.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, so when we look at the budget next year though, and she's got $35,000 in there and part of that was for a refrigerator, does that really need to be a $35,000?
I think her refrigerator's probably going to be like a thousand bucks at the most probably. So I don't think it's going to skew it that much, but.
We'll be able to look at our spending and we'll know how much we spent for the refrigerator. We can adjust it, but.
And we'll look at the actual expenses at the end of the year.
And that'll be our second year on VaxCare, so we'll get a more true representation of how much we're spending. Because this year, we didn't start it until part of the way through, so.
Okay.
You got any flu shots left?
Yeah.
Save me one.
Oh.
He didn't get his.
I was gone when you guys did that, so.
Okay.
Come over early for lunch Wednesday.
Okay.
Anything else?
Get a shot at some lunch, huh?
Going once? Going twice?
Did you want to?
Oh, run, don't walk.
Not that kind of shot.
Call it early days.
Melissa, come on up.
Instead of a sucker, you'll get dessert after your shot.
I don't know, I think he may need the sucker. You could hurt his.
We don't give suckers out.
You could hurt his feelings.
People don't like that.
Where are the capital requests? We usually have copies of the letters on.
It's on Kristen's budget if you're just, are you looking online? If you're looking online, then I have some here.
Yeah, whatever. Going to commission F drive or Y F drive? Okay, then where? Budget, commissions, budget?
So like if you want a refrigerator, you scan an invoice and show how much it might be. So it's going to get better, thank you.
Put on the sales tax? That's going to have everybody's under it? That's ABL something. Oh, it wasn't that one. So they'll all be on this list?
The ones that come out of our account.
Now, if I ask you again how to find this, don't laugh.
Well, don't shut it down, just minimize it.
Now, when you walk away from here and you plug it back into your desktop, it'll break, sometimes it breaks the connection.
But today, I'll leave it up there until we.
Okay, I asked Melissa to come up since we're ahead of schedule. I also, just FYI, called Larry Benz, had Chelsea call Larry Benz, see if he could come over. What?
I want to speak in early if I can.
No way. You go one. I might make you wait till 1:10.
Mine will take a whole total of like.
You can go at noon if you bring lunch.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Melissa.
The Esri quote came back last week and it was $66 more than what I had estimated.
And somebody's got a really bad number complex over there. 666.
Oh, I know.
Let's just make it 6700.
Yeah, could you like, I'm not sure I like that number.
Well, there's four sixes, not.
Yeah, I guess that's true. Four sixes by definition means there's three of them inside it.
And then the imagery, like I said, the cost of that's going to be 34,706, actually 70601, which I just rounded it down to 34,706. And those are the only changes. I would like to see if we could talk about the cities portion. They are actually willing to create a compressed Mr. CID file, which will allow us to fit the entire county's imagery on, probably on one disk so that if people wanted to purchase the imagery without having to buy the entire county TIF imagery, which is going to be quite a lot of images. And if we sell them by the, by the actual tile, it's going to be pretty expensive. I think we would have better luck selling those images. And I know we had discussed previously and Greg has sent out one email at least trying to get partners. I know he also had been off for a little while because he had shoulder surgery. But we plan on sending out another blast to ask for partners. But I just kind of want to see what your feelings are as far as the county just going ahead and covering the entire flight. We will, if we get those Mr. CID, the Mr. CID file, which also just FYI, they're also going to create Mr. Cids for everybody else in the consortium. So that's going to be a real big draw for people to join together again. I think next time, you know, that they're willing to do that. I think though, that if they create that Mr. CID file for us for the imagery, we'll be able to turn around and sell those. I'm thinking like $500 a CD. And I think if.
Who are we selling them to, like Ameren or someone like that?
Yeah, any, any of the people that aren't going to partner with us if they want the compressed version. Well, we haven't, we haven't been selling them. We haven't sold our imagery, we've been giving it away. And, yeah, so I think, well, previous years, we've had grant, a grant from the NGA and USGS that has helped us pay for it. But we've lost our middleman to help pay for that imagery. So, and I haven't gotten anywhere with getting that through. Other counties charge about $15 for each TIF image, which is a, not the compressed image, it's the high-quality image. And we will also have those available if people want to purchase those. We're not going to give them away again this year if, if the commission is favorable to that.
What are they getting when they buy the disc versus what do we have on, online?
They're able to put it into their AutoCAD system. They're able to put it into whatever system they, their GIS system and use it. They can't use, they can't pull our online, yes, view only. That's, yeah, that's what they get.
Well, then would they be able to sunshine request that anyway then?
Well, that's what.
To be able to use, or would we give them something they couldn't use on their own CAD system?
Well, that's what we had talked about, I had talked about with Jill. And I had given her some paperwork to kind of back up selling the information versus just giving it out. And there are plenty of cases where we, we are able to do that, so. And geospatial data is a little bit different case than.
Yeah, but I mean, if they sunshine, we don't have to give it on.
We don't have to give it to.
Some kind of disc that they can use on that CAD. We can give it to them.
Yeah.
Paper copies and still charge them for paper copies.
Well, yeah, I mean.
7,000 pages at 25 cents a page. Or you can buy this disc for $500.
Well, I mean, if we have, if we have it, I think we have to provide it in, you know, that format. We can charge for it though. So if we have it electronically, we have to provide it electronically, but we have to, but we can charge to recoup some of our, what we've put into it, so. Anyway, so that's my big, biggest question is, are we, can we just go ahead and do the entire flight? And the cities portion will be creating the Mr. CID. We will get the revenue for that and, and any grant money that comes to us. I believe we're going to get some grant money from conservation department. It's not going to be a huge amount. It's going, I think they said they had $10,000 to divide between the entire consortium, so. And it'll be divided between how many square miles we are. Plus, we're, I'm still in talks with the consultant about the, they're still trying to get that NGA money through. It's just a matter of trying to find, from what I understand, the money is there, it's just getting a middleman to get it to us.
How much are we talking about there with the extra part or is it included in that 34,000?
34,000 is without any grant money, any, anything taken out. That's how much we have to pay the vendor for the imagery.
But if we did the city part and did the whole thing, how much would that be?
If the city had to pay their portion, you mean?
I guess the part that you were asking, that we go ahead and pay now and then we get back from the city?
No. My, I'm suggesting that the county pays for the entire flight next year.
And that is?
That's 34,706. Yeah.
But that includes the city part?
Yeah, that includes everything.
But as far as we may be getting part of that back?
If, if next year, whenever we create the, or get the imagery back and people want to purchase, say, a disc of the Mr. Cids or even a hard drive full of the, the TIF files, you know, any money or any revenue we get from now would go back into our, the city would not get a portion of that.
So the city was going to create the CID file or?
Yeah, they were going to create.
At their cost or?
Yeah, yeah.
And what's the cost of that roughly?
Well, they, they have the software that creates these Mr. CID files and you have to buy units of, I guess, memory or, to create those. And I'm not sure how expensive it is, it's pretty expensive though to maintain. But they buy it every year and from what I understand, they don't really use it, so. They've got a bunch of units of that built up. So that's why they're able to create those Mr. Cids for the entire sixth county consortium.
So that would be their portion of contribution?
Yeah. So I just wanted to throw that out there and I'd like to let Greg know some things so that he knows to prepare for and.
Does that imagery come out of capital?
Yes. That's how we have purchased it since it's an asset that will be here more than five years or three to five years.
And as you can see, it's.
Forward with the CID file with the city. I mean, I think if it's somewhat marketable and we can recoup some of the costs. It looks like we, you know, by partnering, we're going to save $10,000, so. So that was, that's pretty awesome, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think just from what the RPC told me, I guess they're going to fly a big area all at once.
Yeah.
Multiple counties and.
Yeah.
So a lot of people have gotten on board and that's, I guess, why the cost is lower too.
Exactly, it's, I mean, from Howard County, Monta, I mean, it's a huge area, so. And then Boone County, Boone, Callaway and Cole are kind of the original three. But the more we can try and get these counties to do this type of flight, the more chances of bringing these costs down. And maybe eventually the state will jump on board and start giving us some help with this. And that was kind of one of our things that we were trying to do.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
That's it.
Sam? Chris?
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. You did a great job, appreciate it. Did you get the letter?
Yeah.
I just put numbers in there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Says read only, but maybe it lets you change it, but it doesn't let you.
Bill, you ready?
Doesn't let you save it, so we can play with it, but we can't save it.
Only until there's a break.
Page 101. Sam, you ready? You need a break?
101.
Go, Bill.
Okay. Basically, the only changes I see was some of the increases I requested, which line item, it would be on your second page, 102. And I might just go back, I guess, on 101, explain maybe percentage benefit. Some of the grants that we're able to get from the state. Sam, you'll see that 48212 on page 101, that line item, that's 62,000. That comes from state emergency management. That is operating, which pays the county back half of what we spend. So 62,000 includes salaries, benefits, you know, vehicle maintenance, some of that kind of stuff. So we've been able to increase that the last three years to about 62,000. We used to get about half of that. The 22,000 you see is what the city pays. So in basically all reality, what the county gets back from the state, if it's $20,000, half of that, then the city pays that half back to the county. So it's a pretty good deal, actually. So as you see that, the one line item, the 49797 on 101, that really is not our money that kind of flows through. They use a contract employee and we, we could, he sends his bills to us. They put the money in the account, we just reimburse the contract employee. So that just kind of passed through, just kind of for your benefit. Okay, 102, line I had a question of, line item 53203, our hazmat response. That I requested a $1,500 increase from 6,000 to 7,500. A lot of this is due as.
Which one is that, Bill?
53203 on page 102.
It says 12-5 in here, so.
Part of that is the $5,000 from, was it Kansas County or?
Yeah, if, if that goes through.
Right, I lumped it into his hazmat response, the 5,000 on, there's 5,000 on both sides. There's the 5,000 miscellaneous.
That includes 7,500 plus the 5,000. Okay, Bill, that's all I would, I would follow one.
Okay, I got you. So it would be 12-5.
If you put the 5 in there, I was waiting for some kind of agreement with them and since we didn't get it, I kind of took it back out, Bill, until we got something in writing. And we can add a separate line for it, but it was kind of to get it in.
Yeah, I think that's what I had done earlier, that is separate one.
I'm fine with it being in that line, I just, I just wouldn't follow one, so.
I just didn't want to, you know, lose money.
Go ahead, Bill.
We're seeing some pretty major expenses this year on equipment as far as upgrades. And, you know, the hazmat truck was the $1,500 in repairs for a water leak on the diesel engine. Both trucks, the MLC and the big hazmat truck, we've got to replace all the batteries this year and that's got pretty expensive. I also requested on 53225, equipment service contracts for all of our annual upgrades, a $500 increase on that. Was 3,500, I requested a $4,000. And we're running, looking at my November first report, we're running about 95% on all these expenses. So it's going to be pretty, pretty close coming to the end of the year.
Can you get us a list of those?
All the service contracts, all the cell phone, all that stuff. Yeah. Insurance course was the same, meeting travels and dues. I requested another 500 increase on that from 5,000, from 3,000 to 3,500. That's pretty well been the same for many years and see more costs than that as well. Off supplies, 53273 is the same. You gave me an increase last year and we've been able to cover all the expenses very well on that. 53299, vehicle equipment operation, that's fuel for all the, all the equipment in the building, putting all the generators, all the trucks, all the trailers, everything. I requested $500 increase on that to 5,500 instead of 5,000. 53855, the emergency fund that you've been, the commission had given me. We put the 680 in there last year. We normally had the 1,000, we bumped that to 680 to cover the maintenance contract on the Alcoa warning sirens. That's worked out pretty good. They've had both of ours checked out, all of ours have checked out twice this year. And I think it's mostly, you may have seen the report, we're getting a few little woodpecker holes, but none of that, nothing like the cities where they've actually had to replace some of their holes. Mr. Shepherdley asked about the battery replacement, which is a very good thought. I didn't think about that when I put my budget together. Went back to the contractor and the battery they use is called an Interstate MD31 battery is what they recommend, but they want $135 a battery, there's four per cabinet. I had Jim produce some checking on that because, you know, if you're looking at, we did seven sirens this year and seven, that's a pretty good hit. We can buy them local same battery for 80 bucks a piece. So if it comes to that, and, you know, they're still under warranty for another year, so I guess I really wasn't thinking. So if it comes to that, and, you know, they're still under warranty for another year, so I guess I really wasn't thinking, but of course, that's a pretty good idea, maybe to, to think about if we have to start replacing it. And not saying they won't go for five or six years, you know.
Yeah, but batteries, a lot of times they all go dead at once and then you got that big one-time cost, which, I mean, I guess, you know, it doesn't matter when you spend it, but.
But it's, uh, I mean, his charge is like eighty dollars to replace the battery, but a hundred and thirty-five per bad buying it. And we can get them ourselves local. I just didn't spend my money local, so. I didn't know what the commission might wanna do for that away another year. We'd probably see.
I don't know. I don't know that you'd buy them until you need them. And those batteries that are available off stock?
Yeah.
I mean, I-
And I didn't wanna have, you know, buy a pallet of them and they said they're-
Yeah, well, they die.
Buy them as we need them.
And they die.
If we can get them local.
I agree.
Okay. But the sixteen eighty would be good, 'cause I want, I'd like to keep our contract every two years on the check.
So you need that emergency to be sixteen eighty?
Sixteen eighty was minimal, yes.
And the six hundred eighty was for the warning sirens, the service contract on that?
Yeah, service contract ought to be unfortunately a service contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just put them under emergency fund last year.
So a thousand would stay in emergency and six eighty would go to equipment service contract.
That's good. I'm good with that. Other than that, um, pretty good. I did request in capital outlay some money to replace a table in the training room. Pretty shoddy. Uh, I have a lot of problem with them, not since the legs not staying up, ends fall out from under the glass. It just wasn't a really high-dollar table when we purchased them originally. But other than that, and I guess again, for your benefit, Sam, as you look down on that, some of these funds, LEPC means, uh, Local Emergency Planning Commission. That CEPF fund on fifty-nine, seven ninety-eight, that is, it's called tier two. So anyone in the county that carries a certain amount of chemicals, they pay a fee to the state. Fifty-five percent of that money comes back to the local. So you have to spend that basically for hazmat or wear it or something like that. It's not, it's not a big, big talk. We used to give a lot of money, probably five hundred thousand a year. It's all gone away. But basically, my budget, and, and just for the benefit of Sam, again, on, on my budget, uh, with the sixty-two thousand, I get back from the state.
Tom, you gotta go.
When commission gave Debbie back us several years ago, part-time, she helps me out of my administrative. And so I also get half her salary, half her benefit back to the county out of the county count. So that helps the commission out as well.
Now, Bill, did we submit her salary benefits to the city also?
No.
I think that's why the decrease there to the fifteen is down to twenty-two.
They're still budgeted twenty-two. They didn't change my budget.
Well, I was just looking at what they actually, what we've actually gone back with.
See, we're getting, we're getting ready to send our fourth quarter.
But if you go back to your stipulation, I didn't know there was something-
There's stipulation law, Debbie. She has to take a lot of training to meet the federal guideline, but, uh, she is listed as my administrative assistant and that's why we get half her benefit. But the city doesn't. That's something that we go back to them and ask and tell them. Kind of our thing between the commission and myself. That's pretty good. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even look up there.
All right, any questions for, uh, Bill?
No.
Sam?
Just to kind of give you an update, you remember a few months ago, I told you that we put in for some funds for our shop?
Yeah.
And we were able to get a new, well, next year we'll get it, a hundred and seventy-eight, uh, KW generator. We've got the sixty-fives. Uh, Cole County was approved to receive one of them through Homeland Security. So it's big. I mean, it's twice the size of the one we have. So we'll have that on hand and I was able to secure about eighty thousand dollars for hazmat response and local EFC rates. So with the little deal at, first, in the last few weeks, we put out quite a bit on upgrading all our filters, hazmat suits, Tyvek suits, but we had the money to be able to do that, so. Yeah, we put in, uh, fifty new, uh, it's called CBRAD filters, about five hundred of the, uh, the suits, Tyvek suits. We were able to get them to surplus property, quite a bit of a decrease, so that didn't cost us a lot. Between us and the animals, we got enough to fit everybody.
Is there any way that money could be used for a two-point-on-seven generator?
They won't put in transfer switches. We tried that with some, uh, churches and stuff, too, but federal government said no. But, you know, in, if, in the future, if we decide to put that for, and we've talked about this in the past, the transfer switch there and wire it, we've got the power to do that. We've got the generator backed up. We're the only one in the region that has the two big ball doors and that one. We, we have disaster and they call for us. Sorry, ours is a new, can't go. But we own one ourselves. That will never show up. And I think that's the idea of commissioners by our own, so can't be for it.
Any other items for Bill? Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Have you got Sam set up for Emmitsburg yet?
I'm working on it. Trying to get a date. We'll see when we get him in January.
No, I wanna go.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
I wanna go.
Uh, it's, it's good in January. I'll go again.
You wanna go in January? He goes.
Did you go in January?
Yeah.
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 Remember last year?
Right there at, at, uh, in Emitsburg. There's a slope there.
You're kidding me?
No, he went back there. All the snow and the bad stuff.
Oh, we got, they shut down everything.
I think summer would be the-
Oh, man. God.
There's a, uh, there's called a Liberty, Liberty Mountain there and it's right there in Emitsburg.
I'm really-
It's, and it's lit, so you can ski at night.
And you didn't tell me about this.
You never asked? I would've told you.
I think, I think, I think spring, summer.
I should've gone for, I should, you know, I should've gone for a third refresher course. I could've gotten, I could've gotten all trained up.
Bill said, all right, Bill said we can go again, Debbie.
Can't send me.
Sure can.
Well, how?
We can get you listed now. They're not gonna know later.
Nah.
Somebody get wind of that.
We can work it out.
Yeah, somehow that, I have a feeling that would be really, really bad.
There's three Bushman farms on the battlefield.
Get the rules.
Yeah.
This is just a hill, you know, and mountain, but it's still pretty good.
I wanna go back with that Dale guy, though.
Dale Smith, he retired.
He did. Oh, my God. Did he know the history?
He studies that.
Actually, you know, it's funny, 'cause he and I argued over it.
Really?
No, he and I went out. It was him, me and Greg White. And we went out there, we sat there, walked around places and argued about-
Really?
Uh, I'm a big history buff, too, so I love some more stuff.
Dale studies that.
Well, Sam Bushman the first was the banker of Gettysburg.
Oh, really?
The peders held the town, so they took their money, put the money and sent it to Philadelphia. And, and, uh, Elijah White's Texans threatened to, to take him with them back to Richmond. And, but they at least had some money to rebuild after the battle, 'cause, I mean, you didn't have Seema and FEMA. And so the armies moved on and you had-
Devastated.
You know, fifty thousand casualties, dead, wounded, missing, dead. I mean, oh, can you imagine the smell? In July?
No, he was showing us that one house, like the body parts were-
Well, the Bushman farms, right below the little round top, there's a two-story rock house in the barn. And that's the Bushman farm. But the other, two of the Bushman farms were used as hospitals. And we've, one of them, we've been mulberry, uh, we've been silkworm farmers. And they just totally destroyed all of our mulberry trees, so.
Really?
Got out of that.
I basically grew up on Wolfie Creek, Alabama.
But, uh, can you, I mean-
You ready to do real bridge?
Yeah, bring him in.
Hey, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
You two are us, too, in history.
But you go down.
We're so far out of schedule, guys, looking for them. They take a while.
Afternoon.
Hi, guys.
Yeah, that too.
We had everybody all up checking, yeah. Yeah, we're it. Perfect timing, man.
Oh, Eric is, you're up, man. You're up. I didn't even get a picture of you in there, though.
I know, I know.
Next time, let me know. I'll take a picture with it.
Oh, I didn't even see that.
Oh, no, I wasn't talking about the one where Ed Williams wants your head on a plate.
I thought that's one.
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bounce, dance, dance this stuff around a little bit because I have to leave in fifteen minutes. So if you guys don't mind terribly, I'd like to start with sales tax.
Okay.
And then do the rest of it.
Glad you got here when you did.
I'm keenly interested in what your guys' recommendations for sales tax are.
Eric, I'll watch you.
Sales tax is one thirty-seven.
Latest version that- You got the last check?
You're up, Eric.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and start.
You can work with that a net.
I think our, I know we made a few changes with Debbie based on carry forward and things like that, but the project list is still the same, so I'll just go over what I had. For, uh, just starting at the top of our, our sales tax line items, uh, heavy equipment and vehicles and whatnot, we're gonna do a tractor and boom mower. We've got a five fifty truck with a dump bed, single-exle dump truck. And I think that's it. There is a, is that good? Okay. And then for cooperative projects, which is the, the big-ticket, uh, projects, uh, we have a reserve in there to account for, um, any additional work with the main projects we got going for next year, which is the capital region-based projects around the hospital. The first one to start next year would be the Monroe Street and Madison Street.
Hang on real quick. Where's this at, Debbie?
You can look at there or you can get on it.
What's it under?
It is under-
So you got, this budget one this year seems like it's really confusing to me. It's probably the same as it was last year, but it's just more confusing.
You're under the commission's budget.
Right, year twenty fifteen.
And then you're gonna go down to work in progress as-
Which one?
The, the first one there, November fifteenth.
November fifteenth. Hang on, I got fun. I don't have a November fifteenth.
It's the very first one, work in progress.
I got budget work in progress twelve one and budget work in progress eleven twenty-five. Okay? I got a twelve one. I don't either. That's what I'm saying.
Well, it's the date modified.
Well, the date modified, 'cause she didn't-
That's probably what he's saying.
The name of the file is eleven.
Yeah, see, it says twelve one.
It says eleven one.
Twelve one.
Oh, there, there. I'm looking at the description.
Then what?
Go up to the department.
Okay.
And go down to public works.
Good lord.
Well, how, how do you only do that?
I just want it to automatically pop up.
And go to sale.
What more do you want? Come on, right there.
Yeah, we want you to click your-
I, I just want, I just, all I want is when you put it up on the screen, I want it to magically appear.
Oh, I got my interface. I just-
Do you wanna look at this, Sam? Come up here.
She's got it.
Oh, okay. All right, go ahead, Eric. Sorry about that.
That's no problem. Uh, the main project next year is the capital region, um, the first phase of those projects, which is Monroe Street and Madison Street work.
And where's that at? Under cooperative projects?
Under cooperative projects.
Nine ninety?
Five four nine oh seven. And then also, there's some work in, uh, for next year, some money for next year for designing the Stadium Boulevard and Jefferson Street intersection, uh, which I think is still debate on how that's gonna end up. But we got money set aside for next year to do that, to start the design work on it.
Okay.
On Jefferson Street.
Yeah.
Stadium Jefferson.
Okay.
Um, nothing set in stone on what it's gonna be yet. And then, like I said, I got a reserve in there to account. Uh, we like to, at the, at the year, before we do the final numbers in the budget, we like to, um, use the most recent estimate and use our carrier, cooperative project, uh, carrier, uh, encumbered contracts carry forward. And so these numbers fluctuate a little bit at the year end, but, um, that's what we have budgeted for now. Uh, under bridge construction, um, we're doing quite a bit of stormwater, stormwater work. Uh, the big projects out there in the Woodward Lake subdivision area, uh, several, several inlet projects, all tied into one major project. And additional down in the overlay, um, fifty-four, nine two eight, I think is the, the-
Resurfacing?
Resurfacing, we're gonna do in that Woodward subdivision, redo all the roads in there, too. So kind of a one, a big project to, to cover everything all at once.
Hey, Sam, the good news is the calls will not continue to flood in from Woodward Lake. I've been getting constantly.
After next year. Now, they will flood in while we're doing it.
Yeah, but when they see you doing it, they don't get the calls. I get the calls when they see it not being done.
I got long damn road is one of them. Tommy Stewart was.
Hey, nailed you.
So that, that's the big, the big project next year under our bridge construction slash stormwater work. We're also gonna start design work on the Liberty Road Bridge. That's the one-lane bridge on Liberty Road after it starts.
Is it the BRO project?
Uh, that won't be a BRO project.
It will not be?
No.
Long, long bridge.
But we'll, uh, it's not, um, listed on the structurally deficient list.
Okay.
But we may be able to get some soft match credit for that because it is, um, functionally obsolete with the, the narrow width.
So, so where are we at? Do you anticipate on a carry forward this year? And, and based upon these projected projects for next year, what would the carry forward be the end of that year?
Into the, carry forward into next year?
What do we think we're gonna have at the end of this year?
Well, we have-
Debbie?
Debbie.
Do you have an idea?
Yeah, I don't know. As long as you guys have got this, I'll take it.
Two point nine.
Two point nine, in cash, carrying forward. And then how much are we planning on spending next year? Seven point nine?
Basically, so your pretenses, it's only two hundred and fifty thousand. So, and again, these projects, let's say, listed, will take care of everything there.
So we're just, I mean, the proposal is basically to spend everything this next year. Okay.
Uh, with one exception, we do have a reserve in our cooperative project fund of seven hundred and nine thousand. Which, so we don't get lopsided on our projects, gives us money to, to use towards the volume of this year.
And then we have one more year before we renew, right?
Two thousand-
Twenty sixteen's when the election has to be held.
Right, it goes through the end of the year, two thousand sixteen. But, uh, we'll have to take it to, to the vote in two thousand sixteen.
And it has to go in August. It can't go in November. If it goes in, well, it can go in April, but if it goes in November, then we lose the first quarter sales tax.
Yeah.
You have to approve the tax.
Not on like continued law.
You want, you wanna get that lawsuit from Ed Williams? I don't. Nobody's ever sued. Nobody's ever sued. But the way the statute's written, since the, the tax expires, if we continue it, we have to have the election the quarter before, let's see. Has to, the election has to occur before the quarter before the tax is authorized.
So that it continues, continues long.
Now, I'm not telling you DOR wouldn't let you do it. I'm just telling you that we're under a microscope and, and if we get, last year we did it, or last cycle, we did it in August. I'm pretty sure. It was August, 'cause the city went in November.
Okay, that might be.
And, and that's, theirs is, their start date's April one. Our tax starts January one, their tax starts April one, so.
Do you know our talk, our department already have talked to them before?
That's great. You wanna get the lawsuit?
No, I'm just talking.
Then why do you, why, you know, the thing is, is don't take the chance.
Yeah.
The capital improvement sales tax is so critical to the stuff we do in the county. Taking a chance of a lawsuit that comes in is not worth it.
I agree.
Sorry. On my horse.
Okay, moving on, um, we're gonna start some design work, some more stormwater design work. Two areas, Horseshoe Road, Greenbrier Drive area, just real close to our office. That's an older subdivision as well as the, um, subdivision off Idlewood, just south of one seventy-nine, another one that we need to do some stormwater work in. So the thing about those projects, we need to start the design work, you know, a year or two out from actually starting a project just because of typical drainage easements and things that we have to get to, to be able to start it. And it takes a little time to go through that process. We're, we have a project on Bagnall, Bagnall Drive to do, um, some stormwater, yeah, I wouldn't call it repair work, but it's just individual two, two locations rather than a big overhaul of a whole subdivision. In the Westview area, we have to kind of do it piecemeal as we can until we can get a, a large area to do it once. So there's two spots on Bagnall, pretty good-sized pipe. We got a hundred thousand dollars in total, which will cover part of that. I know we'll be back before we get done this morning. Bridge maintenance, we have our annual twenty-five thousand dollars in there for that to continue doing. Doing that work. Sorry. Under road construction, we're gonna begin the Boise Brewley Road, Swift Road upgrade, starting with the grading work for next year. And then the following year would be the paving. That project's about- And then the following year would be the paving, that project's about three point eight miles long. Little too much to do all in one year, we think, so, and plus with cash flow, we need to split it up this time. Some curb work out in the Woodward subdivision, like I mentioned earlier, with the asphalt work. Some of the curb replacement would be actually under the road construction, but line item budget. There are major thoroughfares, I had mentioned previously in, in different meetings about the Business Fifty project. I've added some money in to cover contingency for that project. I've got probably more than enough in here, and, but just to cover us, so we have, well, we're gonna have some overruns. With, you know, there's just miscellaneous things that we'll need to account for. The additional work on Binder Road and with the Greenway and everything like that, so that money's in there. We'll close that contract out early part of next year, and so whatever we have left in there, we can transfer that into a different line item as needed. And then our typical resurfacing, a million dollars in our annual budget for resurfacing, as well as villages, a hundred and forty thousand for that. And then we also, we carry forward leftover money in these line items. That way we don't get too top-heavy at the very end, usually we don't come in right at, it's usually a little less. This year we had quite a bit of money left over in our overlay budget due to various things, as well as the village overlay budget. So we like to carry, carry forward that balance back into the next year, just to kinda keep us on pace for, average for five years. Safety improvements, guardrail, typically we, we do guardrail and safety, but we don't have any of that for next year, so I show that as zero. And then the, the big, the big project would be the Pioneer Trail Safe Routes to Schools project. And our current bud, our current estimate is just a little under six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that one is, has been submitted to MoDOT for final review and comments. We've gotten those comments back, and it'll be advertised for bid the first Sunday in January, which I think is the fourth. And I don't believe I have any, anything else. Does anybody have any questions?
What's the two fifty letter of credit thing for Saint Mary's?
Okay, that got added in, Debbie.
That's something I understand that we got ourselves into when we did the guarantee with Saint Mary's as far as the building, that road access in there, passing the city. Both provided that cost to that letter of credit. I did have to see a bill on it, so. And that is the exact amount that the city's budgeting, since we were going into it fifty fifty, I said we'd be the best. The line of credit has been pulled, obviously, I think it was pulled.
That was pulled like, two years ago?
No, no, it was just pulled probably a month, two months before they opened.
I thought we closed that out, once they actually had some building going up. Maybe not two years ago.
It started about two years ago.
Yeah, but once they got pretty far along, I think we went ahead and pulled it, okay.
No, we couldn't, no, I think, we were all kinda in the dark about that one, so.
Well, and nowhere is it documented what the fees were going to be, what the interest rate was, anything that told us an amount at any point was never provided.
Yeah, so we were all kind of.
So was, was it a guarantee to spend the funds if they didn't complete it, or what? If they didn't build the hospital and it didn't open as proposed. Saint Mary's was gonna have to pay that money back for the interchange. Right. I'm assuming, again, like Debbie said, we, I didn't know anything about it until after everything was done.
Yeah, we put that up, I remember talking about it, I don't remember what the conditions were.
Did we have to spend the money, or is it just a letter of credit?
We paid the bank, the way I understand, the city holds it with the, the bank or somebody that we insured through or got the letter of credit about, it's in Saint Mary's name, but I don't, I don't know, I didn't have to see it. It's Jill and Mark kinda knew all the details, so.
But I mean, did we, did we have to write a check to the city for two hundred and fifty?
No, I'm envisioning that I'm going to get an invoice to either to the city or to Saint Mary's, and I think it's to Saint Mary's for our house, and the city will be getting a bill for their house.
And this was?
I can ask Jill to step in here.
Did we not pay the complete amount, our portion of the bridge, is that, or that overpass, is that how it's?
I think it's just for insurance.
I don't understand why we have to pay.
It was just for that letter of credit.
Supposedly the bank was charging us to hold the letter of credit open for that period of time.
But we weren't gonna be charged two hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to write a letter of credit, so I don't.
I, I have seen nothing.
No, we're not paying two hundred and fifty thousand for it. We're not gonna get a bill for two fifty.
That's why I.
No. No, we had, the letter of credit basically was ensuring MoDOT that Saint Mary's would build. And I forget exactly how it was worded, cause that's been, hell, that has been two years ago. It's basically, MoDOT was throwing money into it, and they didn't wanna build it and then not have Saint Mary's follow through. And so they wanted a guarantee from them, us, the city, together.
Well, it was cooperative project, city, county, and MoDOT, right? And did we put money in to build it?
We, we built the actual structure.
Well, the, MoDOT, there was enough money that MoDOT had enough for the interchange. We had funds in it to build Mission Drive. Right. That's what we were partners with, is to build Mission Drive from there, from interchange up to the hospital. And we paid for all that? Yeah. Okay.
We can, we can talk to Mark and Jill about that later, I'm just curious how that was, I don't think that was it. I'm positive it's not a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense to us.
Again, that, when Debbie brought it to our attention, me or Eric, neither one knew anything about that one, so. That was news to us. So on the Safe Routes to School, that six hundred and forty, does that include all the design work and the right-of-way acquisition and?
The design work had been paid previously.
So it does not include?
It doesn't include design work, that was, I don't know, golly, a hundred and five thousand, I believe. And right-of-way, there was no money needed for that.
I thought we had to hire a consultant to help with that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we, we did, but it was.
Minimal compared to.
Thousand dollars or so.
Got all that done, or?
Yeah, actually, today is that I got two properties that wouldn't respond back to anything, repeated phone calls and whatnot, and we're able to pull the grading limits back and not get off the right-of-way there. So I gave them a deadline of today to let me know what they wanted to do, if they wanted to sign the easement or not. And so, after today, we're moving forward with get right-of-way cleared, and we'll be ready to go on that end.
Yes, can you explain that letter of credit, how, how that works? That we have a, Saint Mary's had to have a letter of credit, and the city and county.
Well, we, we needed to. City and county is sharing in the cost of this letter of credit. What the letter of credit would do is pay MoDOT back, because if this project didn't go, we are, we're on the hook for paying MoDOT back. So what the letter of credit would do is have Saint Mary's pay us for what we have to pay back to MoDOT. There's interest on this letter of credit, and part of our, our agreement is that the county and city would pay the interest cost for this letter of credit.
So it's basically to ensure Mo, MoDOT, that if Saint Mary's doesn't, then we're gonna go to Saint Mary's and say you're gonna have to.
They're gonna pay us, we're gonna pay MoDOT.
So what was, what was the amount of credit that they needed?
Six million.
That's what, that's what MoDOT had in the interchange, I remember that, that figure. So how much is the amount of the, the interest that we're gonna owe?
I think it's around two hundred and fifty thousand, which we'll split with Jefferson City, but I'd have to ask Drew for sure.
Is it two fifty our split, or our?
It's total.
Okay, that isn't the way the lady at the city.
I don't know, did she tell you something, Deborah?
She budgeted two fifty just on her part.
Okay, maybe so.
So that's why I budgeted.
I'll have to call Drew and ask him.
How long was that letter of credit open? It was over two years, but then.
Yeah, we, we just canceled it a few months ago. So it was, we had this discussion last year, do you all remember that?
I remember talking about the letter of credit, but I had no idea that it was gonna.
It was, the interest on it was around thirty thousand a month.
Good grief.
So then, you know, even at two years, you're.
Maybe twenty, sometimes it varied, you know? You know, Eric, didn't we talk about that?
It vaguely rings a bell, but I don't remember the dollar.
What we discussed about the letter of credit last year was Drew called me, and because of the amount of interest, and said, we're thinking, you know, Jeff City being in tight budgetary situation, about canceling it. And we considered it here, and Mark strongly felt that the project wasn't near completion enough to cancel it.
See, I remember an office did that, always like, well, better this far in it, might as well.
No, that happened a couple months ago. That's when we said, let, let's cancel it now, and that was a few months ago. But this was last year, probably a year and a half ago, when it was brought up.
And if that was thirty thousand for two years, you're talking about half of that's thirty six, three, three hundred and sixty thousand? Not by two fifty that we have.
I'm just, I mean, I don't know, for a letter of credit, that's, I don't know who signed that deal, but that seems, uh, seems like somebody got the screws on that one.
Is it not Saint Mary's with the bank itself, or whoever, they got that letter of credit?
They got it from the bank, and then we signed, but part of our agreement, the development agreement, is that we pay those interest costs. This was all negotiated before I even came on board here.
Yeah, I've got it from oh nine yet, this one's maybe was done it.
Mark could give you some.
They had six million in there on a cooperative.
I mean, I just don't know why we just didn't put a bond up, because that would've cost us less than that.
Beats me, I wasn't here. I mean, right now, it's, it's water under the bridge, it's done. You oughta ask Mark if he knows the answers.
But I mean, so we have to pay it, and Saint Mary's isn't gonna pay us back, or?
Right, that's, that was, the development agreement, the city and the county agreed, that's one of the provisions of the development agreement, is that the city and county agreed to pay the interest on the letter of credit.
Okay.
I think part of it with the bonding was that we didn't have marketable securities.
Okay.
And, cause that was, I think Jim actually brought that up, trying to catch up on some emails. This is like in oh nine, so I'm refreshing.
The city pledged securities on something, they just covered all of that.
Cause we couldn't encumber it at the time of signing the contract, we would've had to encumber it six, the full day in case we would need it, and we didn't have the money to encumber it at the time. But I never saw any kind of interest rate or anything going on, we were on the agreement.
It's not in there.
Okay, can we go back to Swift and Boise Brewley? So, you talk, talking about building that in two years. I know. The grading would be done one year, and then the paving would be done second year. Right. But in the past, you know, when we do that, we have to add six inches of base rock in there, whereas. We do that anyhow, even if we do it same year, or, we, we'll come in and per pug base down. If we do it in the same year, we'll have the contractor do it. Right. But we always come back in and per pug base down. I thought, I thought when we did Zion and that last one with the roller compacted concrete that we did put in. No, Zion, we did.
We had three inches of base rock. The old way of doing it, which we're proposing to do with Swift and Boise, really, we put down two inches the first year, just to drive on, and then we come back in like three, give or take with our pug. So you end up with more, that's the downside of doing it that way. But with that project as big as it is, I don't, I mean, it's unrealistic probably to plan to pave it, plus we didn't have the money in the budget to be able to do it anyway, so it kinda has to go this way.
But I mean, I, I guess I'm just looking at, you know, total cost, I mean, does it save us any money to trying to do it in one, one year versus two?
I, I think probably it's a wash, I think it's, it's easier to do it in one year than to come back and do it in two. It just, it makes it harder to tie slopes in, and I've had some ideas on how to do that a little bit better. As far as coming in, laying the pug base, as we do ourselves, it's probably, cost-wise, it's a wash.
But are we looking to do the roller compacted concrete again, or not?
We probably bid it, but I don't know where we're.
We're still holding, holding core on it. I just drove through Mount Carmel this weekend, and there's some cracks, I would like to, to see how, they're appearing like they did on Zion, longitudinal cracks. And I'm like I said, I would like just to give it another year or two and just see how it's doing. We like it, because, you know, if we can do it that way, like I said, we can cut down on our pug base and everything else. But I just, I'm not real comfortable with it yet, let's.
Plus, we don't know if anybody's gonna be able to do it. Jefferson Asphalt may not have a plant.
Really?
Yeah, I've kinda heard they may not push it as much as they had previously, or, it just depends on if they have a plant available. This year they didn't have it available anyway, so, even though we bid it as an alternate and kinda changed our mind, we had some issues with it, like Larry was saying, we probably wouldn't have gone, we'd been able to do it anyway, cause they didn't have the plant there.
Doing them in two years, you, you find all your, you find a lot more bad spots in the roads before you actually pave it.
I was gonna say, I kinda like waiting a year, you find out if you have issues that would come up.
Well, Ellen, like on Melbrook, we did that one, and we had several areas that we had to come back in and do some work on. I, I feel more comfortable doing it in two years, just for that fact, because, you know, anytime you tear up a road bed, and like we've seen, you all witnessed, you know, we find soft spots that we never had soft spots before, and that just gives us a winner to get it to where we can make sure we get those stabilized good for pavement on top of.
Okay.
Any other questions on road, or our sales tax?
No.
Wanna move to Roden Bridge? Um, yeah, I got one more. Where, where are we at with, oh, at Roundabout, there at Edgewood Stadium? You know, cities talked about?
That, more or less, is just a study.
Okay. Cause we did that.
They talked maybe the, the last year of the sales tax, starting the project, but that was just talk back when, after the study was done, so.
And so, the Jefferson Street, the, the design will be done this next year, and then construction looking like two thousand and sixteen?
Yeah, and so the final year, sixteen, they'd start design on the, the Edgewood, possibly be able to do it in the following year, sales tax.
Go ahead, Larry. Okay, we'll be moving to, to eleven, Roden Bridge.
Was that one oh eight, page one oh eight, that we're talking about?
Yeah, I'm totally lost on all this stuff. I brought our copies.
One oh nine is where they're spinning.
Okay.
Yes, it just says public works, I didn't know if that was Roden Bridge, so.
Okay.
Okay, the only thing we would like to request, one, the budget in there doesn't reflect the raises that were given, so we need to change that. We also, as we discussed with you, would like the ability on those five people that was hired this year to be able to possibly move them to Equipment Operator One during the next year. It wouldn't be before the one-year anniversary, you would add an additional, I had it wrote down here. It'd be an additional six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. And like I said, that'd be based on their performance reviews and stuff. We'd like to be able to get them off that bottom to where if we do have to hire more guys, that we can bring it in at that, at that, as maintenance worker one, and then promote them up if they prove out to be, if they don't, they'll stay in maintenance worker one. Yeah, six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. And Debbie, here, I can give you this copy.
Look, okay, I don't have it, blow the card. From when we did that last, so I guess I didn't follow what you were wanting to do with them, the ones that.
Well, he wants basically hire them all in as a maintenance worker one, but wants to have a budget for equipment operating.
Okay, thank you. And the numbers that are set there to the side, there, Sam, I'm sorry. The numbers that are out there to, to the far. The numbers that are out there to, to the far right, that's based on at the one year anniversary and what they, you know, we had spent throughout this next year, if they are promoted, if they're, you know, if they don't, like I said, if they don't, uh, meet our standards at that time, uh, we'll probably hold it and not promote them. But that's what we discussed with you previously.
That's why I like having that flow chart, I got it sitting here somewhere, I'm sure, but the maintenance worker ones, when you hired them, you had equipment operator one positions open for them and you just hired them in as?
That's what we would like, that's what we were discussing during the meetings, is we'd like to, budget wise, we want them as equipment operator ones. We hire them in as maintenance worker ones. Uh, if they don't prove out, you know, um, then we would leave them as a maintenance worker.
How many equipment operator ones do we need to have, I guess is where I would go with it.
That's basically, what, you know, Jeff, that's what we were, uh, trying to explain during the meetings is the equipment operator ones, all they are is what we've got it set up now with our, our job descriptions, is basically, uh, an entry level position. You know, most of the guys don't have, uh, any experience with operating, uh, they either know how to run dump trucks or they had to have their CDLs, but they've not run, uh, rubber tired loaders or something like that. What we plan on doing during that first year is getting them up to speed where they would qualify for an equipment operator one. That's just be able to load themselves, uh, clean up, you know, with the Bobcat, uh, that type of deal. It's, it's not, we're as far as the techni- technical experience would be equipment operator twos and threes. This is just a basic, yeah, I can get in, I know how to start it, run it, load it, uh, load a bucket, you know, do a little cleanup, so. We expect the guys to be able to run basic equipment and not, you know, when you get an equipment operator twos, that's where you, they've got one area of expertise. Um, you know, they're either motor grader operators or they're, uh, uh, boom mower operators, that type of deal. Um, now the equipment operator threes is where they can operate everything we've got. That's why we've only got three of those.
Larry, step in.
I mean, that's, you're saying right.
Okay.
How many equipment operator ones do we have currently?
I didn't bring that information along with me.
I'm seeing four on here, does that sound about right?
Yeah, I did, I think.
There were four on the station.
Yeah, there's, right, there's four on there and that's the newer guys, um, like Nick Lubring, Tom McDonald, um, Travis Alzey. What we're proposing is.
Well, they actually went to equipment operator one, looks like your newest maintenance worker one is Brent Berenson, Cane, Pimker.
There's five of them.
There's five of them.
Yeah, there's five, that's what.
But if you move them all to equipment operator one, then once their year is up or however you're gonna do it, then we don't have any maintenance workers.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what.
Oh, like Larry said, all the maintenance workers, all we was wanting to do there is have them as an entry level. That's what we hire them in as.
Well, and I, I guess that's the only position that's open until an equipment operator one opens up, then I don't think that they should be promoted to that position. So, I mean, we can, I don't know, you missed a lot of the conversation on it.
No, I wasn't.
I understand where you're going with this, I'm just.
And maybe you just call it in and call them both the same, uh, equipment operator in training maybe, and then they could step up to equipment operator.
Well, what we were trying to do is keep something, carrot and stick is make sure, uh, we wanted to budget and that's why I was, I said previously, we wanted to budget everything as equipment operator ones as an entry level. They'd be hired in as maintenance worker one, just so if they don't pan out, you know, and they don't get the raise after a year's time, you know, they're either gonna be going out the door or they're gonna be looking at.
Well, that's what your order chart showed, it's just all equipment operator ones, right? You didn't have maintenance worker one.
But that would be their carrot. They need to learn how to do that stuff and then if an equipment operator one position opens up, then they can, they'd be.
Yeah.
Available for that position. But if we need to change the work chart completely around and not have any maintenance worker ones.
I guess it's, that's unusual for any other department, you know, there's so many people per type of position, so that's why we're going to hard time coming up, working around that, you know, thinking, okay, if you have them, then you can get up to them, cause they're, you know, opening year, staying there.
Well, that's what, uh, uh, we didn't explain ourselves, that's what we were trying to get to is basically is just have equipment one, two, and three. Ones, they just do the basic, like I said, most of the guys when we hire them can't do that. Um, they, they'll either have experience, some of them may be farm boys that don't have a lot of truck experience, but they can run rubber tired loaders or skid steers. Um, we've got to teach them, you know, the, the, the snow plowing skills to be able to do that, um, or vice versa, we have to teach them how to run some of their basic equipment.
And you could equate it to, some of the departments will hire, um, two or three percent under the grid and in six months they want to bring them to the grid if they work out. But equating to that, if they don't work out, they're left to go, you know, so.
I probably don't have as much problem with that as I do just promoting them because we're gonna have, uh, maintenance. Well, you got a maintenance worker two, he can unclog the toilets, but now we taught him how to sweep the floors, so we wanna bring him up to a maintenance worker two and now he knows how to change the light switch, so we'll make them all maintenance worker threes and, uh, jailer one, well, we, he learned how to unlock and, uh, open his cell without locking himself in, so they should all be jailer twos now. And I mean, they're in extreme.
Are you okay if we bring them in as equipment one, but we, when we hire them, we actually hold two or three percent back?
I think I would be more apt to do it that way than to.
Well, that's basically.
Just promoting them, but.
And then after six months, we could raise them up to that starting.
If you feel that.
If we feel they're where we want them to be.
Don't you do that already or is it a half percent?
We usually hold a percent.
That's usually one percent.
So how do you do that with the ones they've already hired?
Well, they're, they're sitting right there until they improve, I guess is what these five are.
Yeah, that's, that'd be, they, and I can tell you, there's several of them already that.
Pan down.
That have panned out, they've, they've been on equipment big time already, but they just haven't been here long enough.
Those are the ones that I know there's a good chance we'll lose them, but those are also the ones that as soon as somebody leaves, they'll be the first ones that should be promoted and that's, that's where I kinda, I don't know, it's different in the real world, if they can do that for me, they're gonna be making me more money and I can afford to pay them more money, but in this situation.
Like I said, this is, that's what we've had, and that, again, I apologize for not explaining it well or better.
I think I know what you're saying, Larry, and I don't disagree.
Okay.
We just got a lot of other departments that are gonna.
I should have probably, with the work chart, it showed them all as, um, equipment operator ones instead of maintenance workers, so, yeah. Yeah. It'd be a lot easier if we could start them out at equipment operator ones than maintenance worker, cause that's, you know, roughly two thousand dollars more a year between the steps. You know, that's our biggest problem right now is getting someone to come in and, uh, hire on for that amount of money we're offering for entry level.
Or equipment operator.
Well, yeah, well, even maintenance worker, that's, you know, we had several good guys that we wanted and they just said they couldn't do it because of the money. You know, if they were equipment operator one positions, we might have been able to get them now.
Sometimes you grow those young ones from, and then they'll stay.
Yeah, well, that's, well, we tried, well, we lost a couple of our good ones that we were growing, that Tony Hagerman and Rick Hane, and we got them green as gourd and worked with them, but I can't blame them for leaving for better money. They gotta do what they gotta do to take care of their families. Um, I think pretty well everything else, um, fuel, we met with Kristen ahead of time, we had six hundred and eighty, let me find it back here again.
Five three two nine nine one.
We could have, cut it back thirty-five thousand on her, uh, in conversations with her. Uh, I just ran the numbers today based on EIA, we could probably actually cut it back a little more based on, just between when we put the budget together in July, right now, our budget number, uh, using what the federal government's putting out as projected prices for next year, possibly lower it down to five ninety-one if we needed to show bigger contingency.
On the fuel, that's where you have.
The prices are down?
Yeah.
We anticipating?
Uh, they're not, unless something blows up in the world, uh, and runs it back up, their prices have dropped considerably since July when I put this together.
And historically, it has been lower than six thirty-four.
Yeah. And, you know, way I've explained it in the past, what we've, I've got probably ten years of fuel usage gallon wise and that's how we project the gallons and then we use the CIA, um, it's an Energy Information Administration for the federal government, use their projected prices for next year. Right now, they're showing diesel for next year being at three thirty-eight and gasoline at two ninety-four, uh, for next year, it's still higher than what we're currently paying, but, um, you know, Larry, was there anything else in Roden Bridge that you've seen?
Are you looking to reduce the budget amount based on those or not?
If we need. Uh, like I, I always feel that what we put in fuel is, is contingency, if we don't use it, if we can roll it into, but yeah, our projections as of today are that we could reduce it from six thirty-five to five ninety.
I guess I'd like to just leave it at the higher amount. I mean, it's just a budget anyway, I mean, what you use, what you use, but, um, I mean, if it comes in less than great.
Well, it's.
I, I'm fine with the six thirty-five, I mean, I have the, I thought the six eighty-four was a little excessive, just looking at past history of where we have been. I think six thirty-five still has a pretty big cushion in it, so.
And it rolls over, I mean, it, it's, in our budget, it's not like the GR, it, it stays in our fund and we just roll it over next year and I carry forward, so. I would, I would feel better having that cushion myself.
How, what have we done in all the other departments where they had fuel and stuff? Have we left it based on last year's budget or have we looked at?
We haven't gotten to any of them, really.
Most of them have projected about the same amount and both of them are under what they budgeted this year, so most of them have left their budget amount flat for next year.
A MS was flat?
So they haven't made any market adjustments or anything else, so like EMS is just a dollar amount.
Right. Well, keep in mind, they buy all the gas and then they build those parts.
Right.
Right, but he was talking about in comparison to their budget to go up compared.
Well, I know a lot of the departments have called and asked us, how many gallons we used last year, what's your projected cost? And, you know, that's the same way this year and that's what we've, we, we give the information out, cause like I said, we track it by department and even with the sheriff's department, I think we even break it down into several different divisions for them, so.
Yeah, I, I would just rather see the budget amount stay similar to what it was for, what this year ends, um, regardless of what that amount is, cause I don't want, I don't want people to say, well, according to this chart, our fuel's gonna go way down and then they adjust their budgets way down and then all of a sudden, you know, we can see a spike or something and, oh, I got all this free money to spend.
No, the projection actually for them for this year was five sixty-four, I mean, budgeted six thirty about it.
And it'll maybe a little bit higher than five sixty-four, but it'd be right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, one thing we want to point out, you know, we just, uh, we're closing on a property Wednesday, um, on Monticello, we don't have any money in there for any improvements out there. Uh, we didn't know if we were gonna get it or not, so we didn't budget for anything there. Um, I'd probably like to, uh, wait at least until next budget cycle to come back to you with more detail costs, um, as far as what we're looking at. You know, I guess we're still gonna continue with the, uh, ambulances coming out to public works, you know, there had been talk at, at one point of even, you know, expanding that, that's up to you all, we'll do what you want us to do there, so.
You don't have any money in capital or anything to do any of that stuff or?
No. That's where we was wanting to put the wash bay up there, but we took that money out.
You know, there's, that's some thought that the county, you know, the commission needs to get some thought to, in which direction we wanna go, to wanna, you know, where the current gas station sits, do we wanna build a new fueling station there for everybody? Have wash bays available to where the sheriff's department go through and wash their equipment? We could wash our, um, our, do you wanna just add on to our current facility? That's, you know, that's questions.
I think getting it cleaned up right now is the main thing, then we can sit and see what money we have, what direction we wanna go with it, what it's gonna cost. Um, I don't know where, I wish Jeff was here, because whenever they put that in the paper about us buying it, they said, have no idea what they're gonna do with it in the future, which was totally wrong because we had talked about several options with the fuel station, wash bay.
Building wash bay, yeah, with lagoon system.
Planning.
So.
Yeah.
And you got idiots that get ahold of that and they like to write in the paper and then watch your head.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, the taxpayer couldn't raise a cane about that and I said, you know, we had, you had Ned Correll on paper before that thing, we need to look at the long range plan and I said, this is the opportunity to give us, even if it's future, it, it, you know, gives us the land to do it.
Yeah, it was a good opportunity, they don't make more land especially attached to where you're at.
Well, like I said, it, you know, one of the thoughts we've talked about is, you know, like the city in MODA where they have a central maintenance facility, um, we could do something like that or we could add on to our current buildings, um, you know, there's a whole bunch of options we need, instead of jumping off into, we'd like to do some time and spend some, you know, some energy looking at different ways we can possibly, yeah, meet the needs of the county, so.
You got money to demo it and clean it up or?
Get us a price and then clean it up.
We haven't yet, we can't. Um, I'm assuming that we'll have to haul all that material to the landfill, I don't think they're gonna let us bury it there.
Depends on what it is, we'll look at it.
Talking about the building and all the concrete there too or?
I, I don't know, what I've heard is the manmade stuff, um, they, they don't like to be buried, so, you know, that's something we have, we were gonna meet with DNR and, and just find out what we, they're gonna require so we can do it within meets and bounds of the law, so.
Just confused as to what's, I mean, what's different about burying something like versus burying it in a solid filled site or whatever, I mean, they've done it all over town, all over Jeff, I mean.
It's DNR. We have to do a inspection for asbestos and lead paint, things like that, since it was used as a commercial property.
Mm-hmm.
Get all that removed and then we can tear it down.
You know, there's some salvageable.
Solid fill can be.
If it hasn't already been ransacked, you know, there, there's probably some copper and stuff in there.
Are you talking about the building? I mean, they like all the pavement outside, we could fill.
Fill, yeah, any solid stuff can be.
Okay. Just anything that might have asbestos or other harmful stuff in it.
Well, there's all kinds of regulations on that and, you know, I don't know, the Minnesota need to.
If it's got a.
We just need to notify DNR.
If it's got an asphalt roof, you know, that might, probably have to be taken to, cause I know they won't let you bury shingles.
Yeah. We'll check into what they're.
You gotta take it to the landfill so they can bury them.
Yeah.
Well, they'd take the rubber or asphalt, Jefferson, I think's taken that as regrinding it for their asphalt or something too.
I don't know about a rubber roof, but.
With that smaller quantity, it'd be.
Again, once we get the closing, uh, out of the way and the property's ours where we can get it inspected, we'll, like I said, we'll have DNR come out, meet with us and go. get it inspected, we'll, like I said, we'll have DNR come out, meet with us, and go through it and see what we can and can't do. I don't want to get in the middle of tearing it down, and all of a sudden, we've got a notice of violation or a cease order.
Is there any potential for our fire district to use it for some test, you know?
They currently, Cole County currently uses a lot of our facilities or property now as far as driving and stuff like that.
I'm just saying, you know, they burn it down to, I mean, is there potential for training, or is that not a...
There is, but there you have to have all the asphalt materials, I know, taken out of it. We've done practice houses where we've had to pull all the asbestos out, all the asphalt shingles off of it, you know, all that type. All of the anemia mouth, the floors would have to come out, so...
Do you have anything else in public works?
No, everything else.
Do you have anything on planning or parks?
Parks, planning, really, everything, you know, we met with Kristen. We don't have really much of a problem. Parks is the only thing we would probably, Eugene Waters even were pleased with, or parks is, um, is the only thing, and that's something we want to talk to you all about, how you want to handle it. We had proposed, one thing that I passed by Kristen, and, you know, is we need somebody out there full-time from about March to November. What we had just proposed to Kristen was a possibility of hiring an equipment operator, one type person out, and just have him out there for those months, and then we'd switch his salary to Roden Bridge for three months, or four months, whatever, from November to through March, probably, where we paid out of Roden Bridge. Right now, Greg Block's out there, and that's what we put our reimbursement for personnel expenses, you know.
We had talked about this year trying to get all of the costs of the park into general fund and stuff, reimburse Roden Bridge where as much as we could. We kind of got to a standstill on the personnel and how to handle it. We had talked about, I had thought at one time that we could just use part-time people to do the parks and save the benefits and things like that, and talked with them, they would prefer a full-time person. So, I kind of, I took the breakout of vehicle and equipment operation that they had in there and broke it out, but I left the reimbursement of personnel services at the flat dollar amount, and so you guys had a chance to kind of talk about how you want to handle personnel portion of it. Page one oh five.
And we don't have to decide that today, just knowing what the, I mean, do you use part-timers, too, as far as that goes, besides just the one man?
We've got, from time to...
We have in the past, yeah.
Yes.
It becomes kind of a, and I'm hoping within maybe our new system, we can maybe catch part of that and solve that problem with being able to put on a particular person with particular hours can go straight to the right department. You know, I mean, you think, Kristen, we could maybe accomplish that, maybe?
Yeah, until we get into the payroll processing, though, I don't want to commit that, yes, we can split a person and pay part of them here, part of them there. I'm sure you can, but it might make life more difficult on payroll processing.
With different funds.
Right. So, like I said, I think, first of all, we need to know what kind of, are we wanting to add a full-time person? Are we wanting to try and only use part-time people? Are we, um, it just kind of need a direction of where to go with it first, so we can determine what the actual dollar amount would be. So, right now, in the proposed budget, it's just the same amount we have been reimbursing to Roden Bridge.
So, I guess along those lines, the only thing I can think of is that, you know, if we're going to dedicate a person to out there, then we need to really take a look at our expenses that are associated with that, and that would include, you know, a vehicle and a mower and fuel, and so a lot of those things aren't included in there. And, you know, so, and I'm sure you're eating those in out of Roden Bridge or public, public works or whatever, but...
Yeah, with the three parks, you know, there's a truck and trailer, and we have to haul our equipment around to the different sites, so... County Park, we actually use, we keep it there. The fire department lets us use the basement there for storage of our equipment where it can be locked up.
And I think the county actually bought that door out of our, or sales tax, so the parks doesn't own one, but we just kind of wanted to see the true cost of parks on its own instead of trying to pick the cost out of Roden Bridge. We'd like it to stand on its own if possible.
Another question I have, the ten thousand that's in there, is there something planned for that, one of our facilities, or is that just...
That's, we just, it, we've got improvements, you know, in Parks Committee.
It's something that we just kind of put a placeholder in there. I mean, we've talked about doing various projects, but we did the pavilion one year, and, you know, if we don't have any money to spend, there isn't a whole lot of point of the Parks Committee even getting together, and so, you know, there's, there's been some talk about doing different things at the different parks and, you know, replacing equipment or handicap equipment, handicap swing or something.
Brooks Park, the only thing we've got there is, is a pavilion. We don't have any playground equipment or anything else, so...
And just history of that, we bought most of all that stuff out of capital, sales tax, but if you want earmarks of money here for small improvements or whatever, that's fine.
Yeah, now, the one thing that I need to point out, we went through for the last two years on the reimbursement, the personnel reimbursement, the number we had, the twenty-nine four ninety. That's based off the average hours. We went back through the last two years of all of our time sheets, and that's how many hours we spent there. The, our original budget proposal, it actually has that broke out in, on a second page, the hours that were out there, so...
And I think it's the hours for that one, gentlemen.
Right, right. We didn't try and go back to and pull a part-time or anything out of that. We just went through the full-time.
But if you were to hire a full-time person that you shared, you would use the equipment operator one salary and the salary for the person that worked there.
Right.
Which makes a lot of difference.
Yep.
Any, any other thing? Like I said, Eugene Water, we're comfortable with and everything else, so... Really?
Well, we're not comfortable with the budget number, but the whole operation, we're not comfortable with, but the budget number.
I nominate Larry to just take it over.
No.
I was going to say, y'all done such a good job with that. I'm sure the sheriff wouldn't mind giving up animal control to us.
One thing that may...
It's not funny anymore, is it?
The one thing that may change budget-wise, if we would be accepted for the grant that we made application to, we'll have to revise the budget to show it's...
We'll worry about that when it happens.
On that Eugene Water study? Right, that's where we're doing the study of the whole area from Redfield down to Eugene and possibly forming a district out there or something. That's what we're waiting to hear from DNR on.
Do you have the proposed timeline of when they might have that?
I was thinking it was...
January, something like...
January, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was in January.
What they told us at that meeting with DNR?
That they would have, they would know whether we got the...
One thing to keep in mind is right now, included in the financial software is the utility package for them to do billing for if it's a possibility...
We're trying to get rid of that.
I know. If it's a possibility, we have up to a year after we accept the software to kick it back to them. So, we, we don't have to purchase that package, so as soon as we know anything, if you can just keep it...
Currently, we're using QuickBooks to do the billing and, and tracking the expenses, so... And I did see where, I think, Missouri American, I think, did take over Redfield.
Oh, wow.
I think there was something Jill had asked me about. The PSC had put something out about them taking that over. So, if we get a foothold in there, yeah, they're getting closer, so... And they were in, well, like I told you, when we met with them, when I told them we had all the meters replaced with readers and stuff, they sounded a whole lot more interested. I haven't pushed the issue with them. Just, I think we'd have a more sellable project if we could get through this grant and figure out if, you know, what the cost would be to tie it all together. That'd be something to market a little better. We definitely went out of water business.
Oh, come on, Larry.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks. Eric's here, let's rock and roll.
Be back in a second.
We'll take a bathroom break if we need to. I don't, it's up to you all, but we already made Eric wait a little bit. Sorry about that, Penny. We were rolling through pretty good.
Well, we came early, because typically you all come early to get finished early, so we're fine.
Yeah, we snuck somebody in there. We thought we'd be done pretty quick with it.
Jeff, my children were quite proud of your recent apposition, your dog. They thought that was great. They loved the picture with the dog up on the counter.
Yeah, it was going to be hard to walk out of there.
Looked like the dog was going to sign the adoption papers.
It was going to be hard to walk out of there without him. It was like, got a friend now, City Service on one of the boards with me, because I always wanted a bloodhound, and she was here, "What's that, the pound?" I was like, "What? It's like a full-blood red bone." So, I went down there and always cutting some wood out of Job, and I told the boys to meet me out there and help me out with that, and then we'd go by the pound, and we couldn't leave without him. I was like, "Okay."
Yeah, he looked like he needed to go live with you.
Oh, he's so funny. He's Indy. Well, his initials are N-D, so I call him Indy. Named him Naked, so I'd say I walked naked down the street last night. I was going to buy another one called Sexy, I would say I walked naked and sexy down the street.
Amanda has a dog that the lady that has a shelter in Marshfield called her, and this was about a couple of years ago, and said, "I just need, need you to keep the dog for the weekend." And I thought, "Yeah, we know what that means."
Sign that when you get changed, too?
Well, they have the foster hares and stuff and whatever, they keep them for a while, and so...
Yeah. She helps them out sometimes doing that.
Yeah, there were a ton of dogs when we went there.
Okay.
I know.
This was for health, right? Oh, it's almost the same amount as our health transfer. That's why I'm thinking, it was a one-eighties, so, yeah. Who gets this? Okay, we've got that already arranged with the bank, I think, to go do that today.
So, whenever you're ready on the budget, this is all your first...
Do you have a copy of it? Yes, please. I didn't bring mine, I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions about what Kristen has submitted for the budget, I guess, basically, and line item?
Do I, or does the commission? Well, let's look at it real quick. We got a copy of this on my desk, and I didn't look through it. Yeah, go ahead.
I guess the difference in the salaries is the two percent in the pool, probably. And... It's like that's all the same. She put money in for your publications, that's a good thing. She didn't put anything in for your furniture.
Right, it's in the sales tax capital.
Yeah, you can talk about which one it earned.
Well, yeah, the idea with the furniture, I think, I've got a credence in my office from the nineteen-sixties. We use it to store paper. We really need something for both of us to use that could fit against that wall. It's the, it's the east wall as you walk into my, west side wall as you walk into my office, it'd be nice to purchase something that has multiple shelves. It doesn't have to be a filing cabinet, but something that's more useful for us. Right now, you stick in about six or seven reams of paper, and you can't get them out. It's, it's an awkward piece of furniture, so that's what that money was for.
Do you want to get some pricing or get some ideas, or do you know what kind of furniture you're wanting, so get some ideas on it, and we'll see what we can...
Right, last year, you guys approved a desk and an extension for Penny. We did the same thing. We went and got pricing. We brought it, I think, to Debbie, signed off on it before we purchased it, so we would do the same thing for the furniture in my office.
That stuff's been up there forever.
Yeah.
Sixty, is it fifty years? It's an antique.
Yeah. It didn't function very well, and what I have now is just great. It's very...
Well, I'll say, do like you did with the, the desk and the arm and stuff, and see what you can do.
The other thing is I need a new chair. Maintenance has to come up and vacuum every week or two, because the, the wheels are falling apart, so that leaves little black rubberized material on the floor. I don't know if that's part of what I put in there or not originally, seventeen-fifty, that probably would fit. What's a new chair, two or three hundred bucks?
These are so hideous. I know, so I got my office, too, they're hideous, but I guess they're functional.
So, you rounded down the financial institution tax, what we would... Let's see.
Yeah, this is where we were in thirteen. We haven't gotten fourteen yet, so we upped financial institution.
Two fifty, okay. Because we had kept it at two hundred.
This was the property tax, which we said Larry was going to distribute out of his regular property tax distributions. Otherwise, I don't think I changed much, other than the interest, because we took that property tax out. I lowered it.
Speaking of which, does the change in the collector distributing the school fund monies from railroad and utilities, that doesn't affect the budget at all, does it?
Um, other than in the school fund, which we don't necessarily have to budget the school fund by statute, it's more of a...
Okay, yeah, that's where, right.
...internal accounting that we budget this fund.
Right. Because if that's the case, then these numbers are way off for the, for the school fund, because that money, don't we include railroad and utility in our, Penny, don't we include railroad and utility in our calculation?
Right, so it wasn't included all the way up to here.
Okay.
Only in our request is it out, so this will be the first time that there's none of that railroad and utility amount.
I thought it was more than that.
It looks like we were two-three, we had budgeted two million, so you're seeing...
A drop of over one point three.
Yeah, but your cash forward here is quite higher than where you were last year, so that's why you don't see quite the drop.
Okay, you guys have any questions, or?
No, rest of it's good, and...
I would go ahead and state that next year, I'll come and make a request that, that I made in 2011, that Penny, the deputy, Chief Deputy Treasurer, be, her, her position be increased to a, raised to a level eight as opposed to a level seven. You know, when she was hired, she wasn't even paid what John Keble was paid, or the previous Chief Deputy Clerk, I should say. And you all had assured me in 2011 that you all would, and I have the memos from it, you all would, the notes, actually, they're emails, memos and emails, that you all would raise that to his level, and you all were very generous that first step. Then you all encountered some, I think, some budget concerns, and you were unable to, to bring her up to the full level. So, what I did, instead of getting into an argument about what you guys said you would do, that you didn't do, which I don't think is productive at all, what I had argued, what I had put forward was just to increase the, the level from a seven to an eight, and part of the rationale I used was, you know, I would require somebody who replaced her to have a BS in accounting, and I know, for example, the Chief Deputy Clerk, the Chief Deputy Recorder, and some of the other positions that were put in higher than the Chief Deputy Treasurer don't require anything other than a high school diploma. Maybe that's changed in the last several years, but the job description, say, the educational minimum requirement is high school degree, and I can't imagine a Chief Deputy Treasurer without a degree in accounting, in addition to the experience that one would require. So, that's, I'm just giving you a heads up for next... uh, in addition to the, the experience that one would require. So that's, I'm just giving you a heads up for next year, I'd like to, uh, uh, do the homework and present something to you next year, uh, so that we could, uh, make an adjustment, uh, then, so.
What you're looking, throwing it at us this year, I mean, it's, I don't disagree, because when you came in, it was, it was under, it wasn't under John's salary. I forget exactly how that worked in '09, but
Yeah.
There was, there were some things that happened back then that we need to look at. Where, what are you at now then? Are you at a seven? Level seven?
Yeah, she's at a level seven, um, uh, the argument I would make is simply the one that I made in 2011, which I had a couple of memos here, and I can just summarize them real quick, I mean,
I, I'm just curious why you'd even wait till next year to look at and watch that.
You guys are busy, and we should have done our homework before I, yeah, yeah. Well, that's why I waited, is, that's why I was gonna propose to wait, just because I wasn't prepared to make, uh, comments right now. If you want me to, I'll make a stab at it.
Well, not right now, you don't have to, but I mean, if you get it together and we can look at it, I mean, it's, if we're gonna do it, I'm fine with you waiting till 2016 budget as well, I'm just.
Well, I mean, it's, it's just a couple thousand dollars, probably, I would work, I'd talk to, uh, Debbie about it and get those figures. The fact is, her job has more responsibility now than it did before. There were several things that the previous tenants, uh, left out of the job description, uh, you know, i- in effect, she, she is a watchdog, as I am, over anywhere from 25 to 32 or so million dollars on any given day, and she's, uh, got more experience, uh, she's got the kind of experience, I think, that has helped, that's helped the auditor's office and the, the, uh, finance officer's office, in a way that a, a minimum, a minimally, a minimally, um, experienced and educated person in that office wouldn't be able to do. So I can make the argument that she deserves more money that way, but actually, you know, in truth, the position deserves more because I think it's misclassified, and, uh,
Get together as a job description and show where your dedicated duties are.
Right, we'll do that.
What's the worst we're gonna say? Nope?
Well, that's what I, that, yeah.
I just, I don't, I'm just throwing out there.
You all agreed in 2011 that, that, that she should get John Keebles. We got about half of it, then you all were unable to affect, yeah, and, and she was very appreciative, I was very appreciative, and then you all had some, you know, times got tough or tougher, and so it wasn't revisited again, and I thought it was time, since I think the people in this room can, you know, can vouch to her veracity and her skill, and really how the job has morphed into something a bit different than it was three or four or five, six years ago. And I would say this, I'm not suggesting that she should get more money, because I'm not doing all of what I'm required. I probably do more as a county treasurer than my two predecessors. I received about 98% of the money coming through the office, so this isn't compensate her because I'm not pulling my weight in the office. This is compensate the position, because whoever sits in there actually has quite a bit to have, to, to hold sway over. Uh, and the last thing I'd say is her, you know, professionalism, uh, in getting along with, uh, we, we get into issues from time to time, and we have people call our office from time to time that, uh, are kind of ramped up, and Penny does such a good job of not only get, getting the job done, but making sure that our office, um, has very good, strong working relationship with every other office in the county, so. I get part of the credit, but she gets a lot of the credit too, so. Maybe I just took too much credit.
Just get it together. Make sure you include in there that she does keep the microphone away from me during the Christmas party.
There used to be other duties as assigned, but now it's a written job duty, I think.
Since he's got his Christmas party at the same time, he can't make it.
Thank you.
Maybe that's on purpose.
Oh, I wanted to talk about that too, what, what are we doing? As soon as they cross into the county, if they're walking the middle of the damn road, why aren't they arrested? No, I'm dead serious. If you're gonna walk in the road and be a public nuisance, put their ass in jail. Oh, I know, if they make it through Osage County and soon as they cross into Coal County, if they're blocking the road and keeping people from, uh, spending money in Coal County, people getting to and from work, then they'll be arrested, everyone of them. And I don't care, I don't care. If you wanna protest, do it a peaceful way on Siler, out of the way, because I wanna keep living my life, and I want you impeding upon my life. Joyce, what if I'm headed to go hunting or something? I'm not off my pedestal yet, this is driving me nuts. Are y'all seriously going to change your living windows?
I don't know, we were gonna make a decision today, so I haven't.
I wouldn't, I think y'all are catering to their.
No, but we've had some young groups that have some young kids, and they worry about their safety, and, uh, so one of the suggestions was.
We got some of the best law enforcement in the state right now.
The Christmas parade is on Saturdays, Saturday, and I think they're supposed to be here Saturday, so I think the J.C.'s are actually getting some groups backing out of the parade too, and I, you don't wanna do anything that's gonna jeopardize safety, not just the children, but of anybody's.
Hi.
I'm Earl.
You better go quick, because I'm still fuming about this.
I am fine, it, the only thing is, of course, I need some extra on part-time. Well, I had asked for 16, and it's now 13.
So do you need the full 16, or?
You know, whatever I could get over the 13, because, um, I don't know, can I mention employee names? Yeah, okay, um, well, the.
Call them employee one and employee two.
Employee, my retired employee, you know, came back part-time, and she can only work 16 hours because of drawing her retirement and her social security, so, um, and the other part-time employee, what do I do with it? They could each, each, if they could each actually work 14 hours a week, that would be great. And, but that would bring us up to the 16,000. And I think on my, my full-time salary, that went down 5,000 last, in this year already. And I never know for sure how Kristen's figuring salaries on her end with this full-time, but remember when I had, had to hire the, the retired employee's replacement, uh, I gave back 5,000 a year to the county, which is fine, that worked out. Just whatever I can get for the part-time, we just really needed, it's... And I know that I'm down a little bit on my, um, we had me in at 85, bringing in fees, and that's, we're, I know we're gonna have 82, 169, 37, and hopefully I'll get some more of that, but that is down too, because I have to meet, I have to meet my clients' needs before I can do.
So you're saying you think it'll end up at 82, is that?
Oh, yeah, we'll have at least that. We, we have 78, 479, 41 already paid in. And then we have December's, is, which is about 3,700 coming in yet, and that's basically all I have. They're all fine, I, I, it looks like the communication went down 100, but that's fine. As long as that just pays the long-distance fax, and, and I'm sure you, um, Kristen knows that we can afford to go down 100. Everything else is great, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Berl.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Sam. Thanks.
Holly was out there?
Yeah.
Actually, Holly's officially next on the list.
Officially?
You're officially next on the list. She is 168, so page 82.
Hi, Holly.
Hello, good morning.
Morning.
Before you guys start, one question for you, we have to have the indirect cost study done next year.
I have to check on it.
It was hard to understand what it is, but I don't see it for me.
Okay, I know they're not doing it every year now, and it's every.
Two or three years.
Two or three, I'm thinking.
Two already, so.
I, I'm thinking next year, I'm pretty sure it's gonna have to be done.
That's what I was thinking.
Because we still have money that I can claim indirect costs. Yep, on that. And did you get, did I send you a copy of the approved state budget? Got a copy, it came in, they did it early this year, and it's approved for the same bit as last year, which is more than what everything adds up to here. The one thing that I didn't put in my budget that, um, I'm asking to put in my budget, I didn't go ahead and get computers this year, is I'm gonna need them next year. I used, actually, I didn't use it out of that money, I think I ended up taking it out of the, um, uh, office supplies, and then, but I'm gonna have to take it out of this money is getting scanners, because all the courts are going wireless, you gotta have scanners on the desk, and those things are like almost a thousand bucks a pop. So, yeah, you, yeah, you would surprise them.
I got a $200 scanner on my desk.
Yeah, but you don't have the software that's gonna work with the court, so on them.
And is that in your equipment service, or where?
I, I didn't, I didn't even put it in there, because I thought I was gonna get computers this year, and then after I've been buying all these scanners, and then I, my computers have been doing fine, so I thought, I'll get another year out of them. So that's the reason I thought I'd just go ahead and get another year out of them.
So are you asking for capital for some scanners, or?
The scanners, no, I'm gonna get all the scanners this year, I've got, I've already got three of them.
And her capital comes out of her budget, because she doesn't get reimbursed for them.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
I would like to put like 7,000 in there, because if I'm gonna get computers, I wanna get, not the bottom-line computers, I wanna get ones, because I can reimburse with the state, as long as it's under 1,500, I can get that reimbursement the same year, and I don't have to depreciate it. So 1,500, I can get darn good computers.
And that's four, four people?
Five, five, two attorney, three staff, on that. Um, and I'm not sure why the auditor's office cut some of the requests that I had in on some of these, uh, like cutting Rich Bizard. Sometimes I don't have to use him, sometimes I do, and when I, when we put computers in, that's one.
Where's his at?
His is up under the, uh, I'd call it the second, it's on professional services, the second chunk there.
283?
Yeah, because I'm, I am paying him a chunk this, getting ready to pay him a chunk this year for some work he's done.
I think some of the cuts we did this year in her budget were just because we're doing I know you get reimbursed from the state, but as far as.
And then usually I don't spend it all. You look at it, you look at it here, and usually I have, I don't.
It looks like we're doing a very bad job of budgeting, when you look at it, I mean, professional services, I cut it back $1,500, but you haven't spent anything this year, so it, it just, it looks like we're doing a very bad job.
And usually when I use Rich, I use him a whole bunch at the end of the year.
How much are you gonna spend on him this year, or do you think that bill's gonna be?
Um, I've, I've got several, several thousand bill to pay, because I've, I've had him do some stuff, and then he's gonna have to do some more stuff.
No, because I can see what the auditor's seeing, that, that, yeah, 1,170 and 13, and then in 14, right now, you have zero, so even if it's 2,000, so you're saying 2,000
Yeah, and then, and then.
Won't be enough, or you think, leave it at 35, just in case?
I mean, as I said, I, I usually don't spend it, and, and if you guys know me, I'm, I'm the person that goes and tries to get the cheapest price everywhere. When I call the clerks off, the courts, I try to use my cellphone, so I don't have the long distance on it, um, but it's, it's something, if I need it, then it's, it's, I hate to have to come back and you have to do a budget adjustment. I'm not gonna spend it, money for Rich, if I don't need it.
What have we, do you remember historically, even like in 12 and 11?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't wanna necessarily cut it down to bare bones, and then you gotta come back and ask for money, or do a, a transfer.
Yeah.
But if, if maybe 2,000's too low, and you're not comfortable, is 2,500 more comfortable, or you're saying keep it at 3,500 no matter what, is what you're requesting?
I mean, 2,500's probably enough, I mean, probably.
Debbie, you broke it.
She did have one here, and it was over three, it looks like the last of the time you were probably under.
So if we put it at three, we'd probably be safer?
Yeah.
Is that? We can look at it whenever we actually get into it, but you, you'd rather see it kept at three or above, Holly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Postage kinda makes me nervous, um, because every time I turn around, postage goes up, and we're required, we have to send out notice to parties on it, so we get stuck with mailing costs on that. Sometimes they'll let us notify them by email, but not all of them have services where they can check an email on it, um.
See, that one's the same as professional services, we don't, you get 2,300 annualized, 22, 36 last year, so.
And in publications, I actually, I've been spinning stuff out of, of one, uh, investigations, that's where probably the publications actually should be bigger, maybe than the investigations right now, because that's where my Westlaw is coming out of, and that's 1,200 dollars a year, and then CLEAR, which is 1,400 probably a year, which is a, CLEAR is a, it's available to law enforcement, and probably the sheriff's office probably has that also. It's a, um, a search engine that Westlaw has that lets you look, try to track down and find people, um, gives us access to like, um, utility bills. If we're looking for somebody, in the first place, a lot of times you can find them is when they hook up their, their utilities, is we find people, we track them that way. Those are, are the two big, um, and then publications, we have newspaper, a couple different newspapers and legal journals that we get there. But as long as I can pay one out of the other, um, it doesn't really affect, but I know I'd rather have 1,200 in the publications, because I, I don't think, um, if I can pay some of it out of there, it kinda drives with my state budget better there. I haven't been, um, paying that much in fees, um, I'm, I'm, didn't do much service out of there this year, and one reason for that is our special process server had some serious medical issues and subsequently died, so I haven't replaced him. But I've been getting fairly good service out of the sheriff, so I'm just kinda playing a wait and see. If I don't need, if I don't need to find another special process server, I won't.
So you're okay with 3,500 then?
It, it should be okay for that, yeah, I think.
Well, if some, for some reason it comes back up.
Yeah, I mean.
We'll look at, but in 13 years, it's 33.
Since Greg's been in there, I have gotten a lot better service than I did in years past, where I could not send a deputy out to get any service on a paternity issue, and there are still, I'm still probably gonna have to come up and get a, um, a process server, to do some of them, because they just won't answer the door for somebody in uniform. So we send somebody out in plain clothes, and, and send somebody out also at like 10 o'clock at night. You get better service at 10 o'clock at night at certain places than you do.
Sure. Middle of the day.
We used to, they used to always just leave cards on the door. I'm like going, "They're not gonna come in the sheriff's office and pick something up, not gonna happen." But otherwise, it's, yeah. Everything else? I mean, I could always advocate more money for my staff, but I kinda figured that's on.
We're working on that.
Might as well save my breath. At least there's something in there this year. I did tell my staff when I came down, at least there's something in there right now, if it, in the auditor's budget, anyway. So that would be greatly appreciated by them, I'm sure.
Auditor's just trying to make us look bad, they put the raises in there. Ah, 12% raise. I'm just teasing, I'm not, I'm just teasing, no. They, they, they always put it in there though.
If I can get where I, I'm not losing, I mean, I've got one staff looking for, I know she's looking for workouts already, I've had. for, I know she's looking for workouts already. I've had calls from employers, and I've had, I went for years and years without any turnover, and I'm losing them to the, to the, I lose them to the state now, because they just can't, they can always get a better salary at the state if they wanna go. But luckily, I'm such a wonderful boss, they.
That's, I thought it was, because we were wonderful bosses.
No, no. My, my staff like me. At least my staff like me. Most of the people I deal with don't like me, but my staff does.
Well, no, because you want money from them, or you wanna make sure that they're paying their money, so obviously, they're not gonna like you.
No, no, yeah. I take things away from them.
Not necessarily theirs, is it? It's not always necessarily theirs, is it?
No, but if they post that bond, and, and it's signed as, as their name is their money, I take it.
Debbie, if he does, if Eric does send up a request, I do wanna kinda look at what the deputy, whatever across the boards are paid, because I know that when she came in, it was a, I didn't necessarily agree with how that all worked out either.
And Penny really does do a lot of workouts, and any, any tracker who ordered it, especially with Medserv and the county self-insurance.
Yeah, I'm not taking that away from her, but they gotta go through the same steps we make everybody go through.
Right, I just, I, I will say that she does a really good job of keeping on top of all of that stuff that wasn't there previously.
Yeah. So, I mean, we did, I think in eleven, we did promise we was gonna look at it, or we actually got some of it for her then, and then we was gonna try.
No names, yeah.
All right.
All right, Greg.
Greg, what is this?
It's just hot in here.
I'll get to that here in a minute.
Oh, my God, Greg. You're killing me.
I'm trying to.
I believe it.
Uh, I'm on page one, I'm on page sixty.
Go through this first.
Might as well just get the easy part done.
Okay. Changes?
Uh, just a couple. R and M for the courthouse, I'd like to take it back to eleven hundred, or eleven thousand instead of the ten thousand proposed.
Where are we at?
Five, three, two, eleven.
Dash twenty.
You said R and M, what?
Repair and maintenance.
Five, three, two, eleven, twenty.
Okay, well, I found that now. You say R and M.
I'm sorry, I've got it listed as R and M on my spreadsheet.
What are you doing with it?
I'd like to take it back to eleven, eleven thousand.
Oh, you wanna reduce it?
No.
No, it's at ten.
It's at ten.
I got eighteen on mine.
Eighteen, I'll take eighteen.
You want supplies, maybe?
Oh, fifty-three, two, eleven, twenty.
Yeah.
How do we have fourteen?
Do you need some reading one?
Well, there's courthouse building fifty-three, two, eleven, fifty-three, two, twelve.
Okay.
Good night. Good night, Gracie.
Just because train parts and stuff are no longer available for any of that equipment in the courthouse.
Trains? We have trains.
Yeah. They will no longer offer fan motors, coils, or nothing for that, since they're that old. They're mid-seventy-twos. And even the chiller outside are getting hard to find parts for.
So.
Okay, what else?
In thirteen of them, that's about eighty-eight hundred annualized. This year's eighty-nine hundred.
Uh, probably gonna be closer. This is act, uh, middle of last month, I'm almost at eight thousand dollars already spent out of that account. There's more bills in there.
All right, go ahead.
Juvenile center is the same way. You're at ten, I'd like to go to eleven-five, but if we can't, we can't understand. Same problems down there. The McQuarrie fan coil units, I've gone from spending two-hundred and fifty dollars for a fan motor, and for those plastic squirrel cages, to almost thirteen hundred dollars. It's because they have to make them. Parts are obsolete, can't no longer get them. Their control system down there, Thermomechanicals will not even offer boards or parts for any of that software down there now. Same way with the chiller, our chiller, which is a train. If we take another brown eye like we did it last year, we'll be replacing the chiller. Boiler, we just got lucky and got parts for it. We got the last metal disc for it from a company out of Washington, to get that back up and going. And that's pretty well it. Utilities, we'll play with the game, we'll see where those go. That's, you know, if PSC gives Ameren a rake hike, we'll just have to deal with it. Everything else? Bottom, five, three, two, ninety-eight.
I left him a question in most of them.
So, all the two ninety-eights utilities?
Yeah.
I wish I'd said that somewhere.
Sorry, I had to get it fit on the page, so I took it heading out.
So those are just those two items you just need back?
Yep, if I could, it'd be great. And then, in the red packets.
Off the wall of papers, that'd be great.
Oh, it's stuff you haven't, you've seen before.
Again, here we go.
I went ahead and updated the asset for each building, for the courthouse. Didn't do public works, didn't do the old jail, and I didn't do the new law enforcement center. But I've done Sheffers, what they're gonna looking at is, they're probably gonna need their AC units replaced and upgraded, as well as the hanging units. We replaced one last year out in the bays.
At Sheffers?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be.
How cold would it get in there if there wasn't heaters in there? Especially now that we have the ambulances in there.
It wouldn't freeze, I guarantee you.
No, it's not gonna freeze.
Okay. I mean, how much do they use it? How warm do they keep it in there?
Well, last night when I was out there, when, when we had the minor flood in the new park, they had them set at sixty degrees. And that's up to you guys, whether you want it sixty degrees, fifty-five degrees.
And the EMS part, or?
EMS was set at sixty, I think, and then Billside was set at sixty.
In the bay, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd turn them off. That's just me. I wouldn't even run them.
Unless somebody's working in there, or else it's getting terribly cold for some reason, but.
Yeah, I mean, I saw, on a couple of stats that I saw, it was like sixty-two, sixty-three degrees in there, so.
Do they, do those have to run for those scrubbers to work?
Uh, I have not seen, I've asked Mike for some literature on the scrubbers and stuff, and he said he'd get to me, but I haven't pushed it for it. So scrubbers are just, they just move air, as far as I can tell, and got filters in them.
I mean, I don't, I would assume that those electrical plug-ins that they plug their ambulances in to keep the ambulances warm enough, and, and run that cooler to maintain the temperature of it.
I'm assuming they do, yeah.
And as soon as you open them doors, all your heat goes.
Yeah, yeah, so there's no point really having it.
I mean, if none else, I would just slowly drop it down and see how it affects it, because it.
Now, there is some water lines, but like I said, I don't see it getting down to thirty-two degrees in there for a while.
So the replacement of the hanging heaters and AC units, where would that be? In the cooler, or?
No, the AC units for the front meeting rooms, for where Debbie says, Jennifer, all those, for all those meeting rooms through there. Just from this year, going through, doing the winter, winterization of them, or the winter startup for, for heating season, burners are just burning apart. We're gonna have to replace them before long.
And so we're talking fifty grand to replace those?
That's with, you're gonna have to go from an R twenty-two system to a four-ten, which is gonna be a line set change. And I don't know what all that's gonna, how far they're gonna have for line sets. That was also included, the hanging the units out in the bay too. That was both.
So the replace, the hanging of the heaters and the AC?
Yeah.